I had lunch with, um, the public waste, um, their media person, no, um, Ginger Rich. She's a reporter. She used to be a reporter in Phoenix. Yeah, she used to be a reporter, uh, Phoenix, Dallas, Dallas, Georgia, yeah.
Yeah, she's a reporter, yeah. The Pacific Power. Yeah, we had lunch today and it was just nice getting to know her. She was talking about the, uh, landfill over there. Uh, not so many people are upset about it and, you know. Oh, yeah. Right. Yes. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council meeting on Wednesday, uh, May twenty fifth, uh, twenty twenty two at six P M. I'd like to call the meeting to order and, and do the pledge of allegiance.
Run this, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Allison, can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor, Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Here.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Johnson the second.
Here. Marilyn, would you like to go now?
Yes, I would.
So I'm gonna make a quick, a couple deviations to the agenda tonight. Um, Marilyn Smith, Counselor Smith would like to honor a friend that passed this recently. So I'll turn the floor over to Marilyn Smith.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to, uh, acknowledge the, uh, recent death of my friend and former colleague Kathy Ingles. She died on May twelfth, um, in Salem and after, uh, working at the Democrat Herald for twenty-four years covering the city of Albany. She, um, was a big fan of historic preservation. I think it's appropriate that this is Historic Preservation Month. Um, so I, uh, she would appreciate that. Um, she also was a student of history, which made her interested in historic preservation and made her, uh, she was a very active member of the Albany Regional Museum. Kathy never lived in Albany. She lived in Salem the entire time that she worked here. But she was a member of the Albany community in a way that many people, um, don't take the time to be. She was on the museum board. She wrote a column for the museum newsletter and we have been carrying that in City Bridges for the last several years. And it was one of our most popular, um, features in City Bridges. Kathy and I worked together at the Statesman Journal when I first went to work there in nineteen eighty. She had, was working for the Capital Journal, which was then the afternoon paper and the Oregon Statesman was the morning paper. The papers merged about six months later. Uh, in nineteen eighty-seven, I left, uh, the, the Statesman Journal to come to work for the Democrat Herald and Kathy left two years later to come to work for the Democrat Herald and she retired from there in two thousand thirteen. She was a very good friend. She was a member of our reading group, our monthly reading group that's been, uh, in business since nineteen ninety. Um, and just, uh, an exceptional person who deserves to be remembered, particularly here in City Hall where she spent so many evenings taking copious notes and writing excellent stories. So, um, thank you for your time and all, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Marilyn. And in light of the recent events and recent events in Texas, like a moment of silence for the young, young people that passed away and teachers at that, uh, elementary school. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a, um, proclamation, uh, L G B T Q Pride Month, page three of your packet. Proclamation, L G B T Q Pride Month, June twenty twenty-two, whereas the month of June is globally recognized as L G B T Q Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall uprising that occurred in Manhattan in nineteen sixty-nine. And whereas the L G B T Q Pride Month was established in a worldwide effort to provide positive stance against violence and discrimination toward lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer persons. And whereas the city of Albany embraces and welcomes all people of diverse backgrounds as a critical aspect of fostering a vibrant community. And whereas L G B two, two, T Q community contributes to the academic, artistic, civic, and economic success of Albany. And whereas the city of Albany recognizes the importance of supporting Albany's L G B T Q community and is dedicated to ensuring all Albany residents are empowered to live their lives openly and achieve their greatest potential. Now therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson the second, mayor of the city of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the month of June, twenty twenty-two, to be L G B T Q Pride Month in Albany. And I encourage all residents to accept, celebrate, and recognize the efforts and ongoing contributions of the L G B T Q communities within Albany and to work together and to end discrimination against these members of our community. In witness whereof, I here to set my hands, my, set my hand and cause the seal of Albany, the city of Albany, Oregon to be affixed this twenty-fifth day of June, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, Alex Johnson the second, mayor. Next on the agenda, we have public, series of public hearings. So bear with me, um, going through these. First up on the agenda is a, um, public hearings for Parks S D C methodology, uh, directions on how to testify and submit written materials or publish in the council agenda. I declare the public hearing open at time, six oh six P M. So Counselor, Director Ladain. Does staff have a report?
All right. Sorry about that. Um, so we had a pretty lengthy discussion on Monday. Um, I don't have anything else to present unless you would like me to bring up the presentation or I'm more than happy to answer any questions that might have come up since then.
Counsel.
I just had one more question, uh, probably for the city attorney when we were talking about the scaling and the potential ramifications of it doing it to an extreme level. Um, is there a line if we're talking about doing it for the normal water and sewer rates, uh, and for building S D Cs? Tiering it, I guess, is, is also a way of scaling, I think. And is there a level that we can have that doesn't trip the wire for possible adjudication or that we have to stay away from?
Are you talking, general, or are you talking only about Parks S D Cs?
Uh, both.
Okay. I would say that water sewer S D Cs and things like that, not everything but parks is, you're, you're gonna have capacity. I mean, it, it's, for example, if you were to say, well, we're not gonna charge S D Cs for A D U's, like some of the, some people in the state, uh, have asked. Um, they contribute to the, to the water lines and sewer lines. They, they, they impact those. And so if we did that, we would be increasing the, um, the strain on those systems without having any money in reserves to replace them. So that certainly wouldn't be advisable. The tiering that I've seen with the parks, they base that on, at least, I think, and I don't think Doug's, Doug is on tonight. We can ask Doug. I think they, they base that basically on the impact or perceived impact of the size of the dwelling. So if, I think the list we had the other night was five hundred square feet or less was forty-eight percent based on the number of people they would perceive being in a five hundred square foot house and how they would impact parks. Or people would be in there and how that would be impacted. So those numbers, I think, were, I think Doug will were deemed to be, uh, defensible at, at that point. Anything under that, I don't, I can't guarantee you that it is, so.
Okay, that was the answer to my question. Thank you.
He's there too, I've seen.
So go ahead, please.
I'm, I'm sorry. Are you looking for my input?
Are we looking for his input?
Yeah.
Yes.
Did you?
We'd like your input.
Sure. Um, so, so the reason the, the scaling presented to you for parks works so well is because it is, it is tied to average occupancy. Um, it's certainly possible that a similar kind of scaling could be used for water, for example. But then you, you would want to have some data, uh, that correlates, uh, house size with water consumption, for example. Um, so, so you want, you would want to maintain the nexus with whatever the burden on the utility is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I would make a quick clarification. This, tonight's meeting is not about rate setting, correct?
Correct. It is just the methodology.
Just methodology. Okay. Not about rate setting. So make sure everybody knew that. Okay. Is any questions for Director Ladain?
Yes, Your Honor. I just wanna, I just wanna clarify something that Monday was, um, lots of, lots of words. Uh, and I appreciate the, the clarif- clarification that you've given and stuff, but I wanna make sure if we're just working on the methodology, we, are we including the methodology for businesses and how many employees they have?
It is included in this methodology, correct?
Okay. I, I have, um, I've heard a lot, probably more about this than I have on most other things and stuff. And so I don't know if that's part that we can take out and put aside and think of it later, but, um, if that's included in there, um, I cannot be in favor of it. Because you don't, it's, it's just not right. You don't know how many people use the park. You don't. And, and I think it's just not right.
Counselor Nov- thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Novak?
Yes, uh, thank you. I, I wanted to reference the analysis by Mr. David Shaw, which was very eye-opening to me that this methodology seems to focus, um, on the Portland metro area, which we are not. And I'm wondering if we are gonna, I, I would like to take his analysis into consideration before we move further.
He's actually coming up to speak.
I understand that, sir, and I appreciate it. I just wanna make it known that I, I looked at his analysis and I appreciate it. And I appreciate the work from the parks as well. I do. But I, to me, this raises some really serious questions and I'm hoping we will be able to discuss that before we settle on a methodology.
Yeah, public hearings are no time limit, so we can talk about it. Okay. Now, I'd like to be at home before midnight, but other things are good. Okay, um, any other questions from Director?
On the method, methodology, uh, and to Counselor Johnson's comments, um, for out-of-town people that are using our services and being, then, then being charged. Uh, we already do that for like library. Uh, I don't, and I have no qualms with that. Haven't heard any problems with that. If people are living in our working in our community and utilizing the services of the community as a whole, I think they should be part, partly responsible for paying for some of those. I have no qualms about having those included.
Counselor Novak?
Yes, but in response to Counselor Kupczynski, with regard to businesses, it's the business owner's pocket that this money would be coming from, not the employees.
Understood.
Well, that's a huge thing, it, to my mind. That's a huge thing.
Okay. Anybody over here? No comments from this side? Okay, thank you. Um, written materials submitted by the deadline were forwarded to the council. Written materials were submitted by Mr. David Shaw. Um, I will now call upon those who have signed up to speak after David Shaw's complete. Thank you, Director. Uh, David Shaw, is he on the line?
Hello?
Uh, you're online with us, Mr. Shaw?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, okay. I understand that I only have three minutes, so I'm gonna talk very quickly.
So, Mr. Shaw, public hearings are a little different than, uh, business from the, business from the public.
Oh, oh, okay. Um, well, I timed it to be about three minutes, so I, I'll be brief anyhow, but I won't have to talk maybe quite as fast. So I'm gonna, uh, hit on the highlights of the key issues in my written testimony, which Counselor Novak just referenced and which is on pages twenty-seven and twenty-eight of the packet. I'll start out by saying, even though this might sound a little corny, I think that debate and discussion can ultimately lead to better answers in the end and hopefully I will contribute to this. So of the, uh, key issues I identified, the first one is that the methodology report does not provide any specific evidence to support the idea of non-residential or employer S D Cs. And more specifically, the methodology report just arbitrarily assumes that people who work inside Albany have ten hours per week of park availability, but there's no substantiation or justification at all for the figure of ten hours per week. It, um, was kind of, I guess, to my mind, sort of pulled out of thin air. The second issue, um, is that the methodology doesn't address the potential impact of COVID. So for uh, people who lived outside of Albany but worked inside of Albany, uh, COVID is potentially a factor in terms of facilitating or expanding remote and hybrid work arrangements. That would be fewer people coming into the city physically and therefore fewer people who live outside Albany but work inside Albany would be using our park. And so again, my point here is simply that this is something that the methodology should account for. It's, uh, becoming increasingly prevalent, increasingly important. If we had a really very long strain of COVID again, it would, you know, become a, a absolutely major issue as a number of offices would likely close and essentially mandate remote work. Uh, my third issue, the, uh, big point that I'm trying to get at here is that the report doesn't indicate whether the proposed methodology has been used elsewhere and whether it's proven to be accurate and reliable. You know, has it been tested and proven its mettle, so to speak, elsewhere? Uh, we don't have any answer to that, so we can, I think, legitimately raise a question of how do we know the methodology works? My key issue number four is that I don't think the methodology's park availability measure is a credible measure of park demand. I personally think it significantly overstates park demand. Um, again, the figures here were simply assumed or posited. There's no explanation or justification or empirical evidence to support the figures that are used and to illustrate just one of them as I indicated in my written remarks. Uh, somebody who lives inside Albany but doesn't work is assumed to have a hundred and twelve hours per week of park availability, which is sixteen hours a day, seven days a week. And I think it's obvious that that's a very aggressive assumption. And if you collectively look at the whole category of people who live in Albany but don't work, first of all, a significant number of them would be, uh, people, uh, people under age fifteen, which according to the city-state is about nineteen percent of our overall population. Also, older people, elder people who are retired would be in the not working category disproportionately. So when you look at the category of individuals who don't work and you consider the very young, the very old, uh, people who may have physical disabilities, people who are caretakers or are very active parents, active, busy parents, I think it's legitimately, illegitimate to question whether this figure of sixteen hours a day, seven days a week of park availability is a credible one. Next, I'll make a general comment that covers my issue number five and my issue number six. Uh, an extremely critical step in the methodology is taking information about a building or structure and then accurately inferring the number of residents or employees that will be using it. This is what drives the bottom-line S D C dollar amount that's assessed for that building with this methodology. Unfortunately, there's no evidence that the methodology's ways for doing this, for going from the building to the number of people who are, you know, living there or working there, who are residents or employees. There is very, very little evidence presented for the methodology's way to perform this critical function. And the report does not even make a concrete, specific claim that this methodology works. Uh, as I recall with respect to the residential, it's, uh, first of all, the data is from Portland, the Portland metro area. It's nineteen ninety-nine data, as I recall. Um, it uses S I C codes. Uh, actually, I may be mixing up residence, residential and non-residential here. Uh, the S I C codes apply to the non-residential. Um, anyhow, they were last updated in nineteen eighty-seven, a long time ago. And with respect to the residential, as I recall correctly, the report says, up to a point, um, the number of people who live there and the size of the home are positively correlated. But positively correlated, that's a very, very weak statement. And moreover, um, to understand the amount of variability that is accounted for by a positive correlation, you have to square it. So if you have a point-five correlation, um, then that means the, it accounts for point-two-five or twenty-five percent of the variability. So it does not account for seventy-five percent of the variability. So it's, I think it's legitimate to ask, you know, are we going to assign thousand-dollar, multi-thousand-dollar S D Cs based on a correlation that does not account for seventy-five percent of the variability? Then, uh, my issue number seven is, in my view, there is no user-based evidence that indicates a need for new parks capacity. There's no direct evidence that Albany's population growth will lead to a user-perceived or user-relevant shortage of park resources. The determinations around capacity in the methodology report included things like, you know, parks and natural areas, acres per resident, but I don't know that that really is a relevant measure or something that impacts a user of parks. I'll also note more broadly that the proposed methodology does not, did not get any information directly from park users. Didn't interview them in any way. Um, there was no form of direct communication or interaction with park users and no reference to observation even of Albany's parks. So, um, while I appreciate some sophisticated number crunching, it came across to me as quite an armchair methodology without collecting hard factual empirical data from the parks themselves and the people who use the parks. And then my final item here is there was a reference of, uh, maximum allowable. That's the term that was used in quotation marks, maximum allowable. Uh, that criterion was referenced in the report on, uh, several occasions, but I don't know exactly what it means. I interpreted it to mean maximum allowable by law, the maximum legally allowable amount. But we all know of things that can be legal but aren't necessarily good policy or the right thing to do. So I personally don't believe that the maximum, maximum allowable quote-unquote criteria is the right one to use for developing a credible and robust methodology. And I will add one more comment. In deciding to approve a methodology, I think the city council should consider that ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, a city council consisting of members that none of us know, none of us have met, none of us know what their motivations will be, um, they, you know, they would be potentially using this methodology. And so while we kind of know and trust the people we work with now, we have to realize we don't know who would be using this twenty years down the road. So we want the methodology to be, uh, credible and robust. And while not overly restrictive, we want it to be restrictive enough so that it's used in an appropriate fashion. so that it's used in an appropriate fashion. So those are my comments. I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. We greatly appreciate that. And I will now call upon those who signed up to speak. And I will start with Bill McHugh, or is that correct? Okay, Bill McHugh in opposition.
My name's Bill McHugh. I reside at thirty-two sixty-six Countryman Circle, Albany, Oregon. Born and raised in Albany, as was my dad. And I've been a commercial real estate broker here for about thirty-four years. I was misinformed a little bit by some people on exactly what we were giving testimony on this evening. And so I'm gonna kind of go with the flow, and hopefully I stay within the parameters as much as possible. One of the hard parts is a little bit was reading the paper this morning and reading about the council, the paper made it sound, it already made a decision on most of all the charges, you know, the fees were gonna go and all that. And I was like, boy, it seemed like we should have had the public hearing first, and it was a little disappointing. One of the things that I like to do is put numbers to things. And so currently, I have a client that's building three houses on Jackson Street right now, and they're thirteen-hundred-square-foot houses, three-bedroom, two-bath, just houses. And it's what will be sold in the first ten minutes they're done. And they're getting ridiculously expensive, as in everybody's opinion that has ever lived in Albany up to this point. And on those houses, he, his fees to the city were right at twenty thousand dollars per house to, for SCC charges and all that, even though those lots have paid taxes for somewhere around a hundred years. Or people have paid taxes on those hundred years. And they haven't cost the city of Albany basically a dime in that period of time. But they collected the taxes, and in theory, used the money for other things. And so the whole premise of the lots need to pay their share for what's there, they already have. I mean, if you amortize for a hundred years, even what, twenty bucks would cost back a hundred years ago, at five percent interest, it'll double every fourteen years, and you do the math on that, and some numbers get astronomically large. So it, it is just one of those things that the whole premise escapes me. But so on this gentleman that built these houses, he's gonna mark that up ten percent, like every builder does. And then the darn realtor comes along, and he puts a commission on top of that, and that raises it up a little bit. So it'll be somewhere north of twenty-two thousand dollars currently with our current fee structures. What's interest rates on a house? I mean, who, I mean, you know, was it the two-and-a-half percent we got down to? Was it the eighteen and three-eighths that I paid in nineteen eighty-one? Somewhere in between, hopefully. And I'm gonna say a fair number would be five percent, which right now, that's a little bit high, but it won't be next week, most likely. And if you took ten thousand, I just did some math, and if you did ten thousand dollars at five percent for thirty years, which is a normal home, payment on that's fifty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents a month. So if you take twenty thousand dollars, that's gonna be a hundred and seven thou, a hundred and seven dollars a month, every month for thirty years, just for the permits, before a shovel hits the ground or anybody does anything. You add a little bit other as that expands up, somewhere in a hundred and fifteen dollars a month, every month, for the permits to build. That sounds terrible, but then if you use the proposed fee increases that are coming, and we're talking about parks currently, but I personally think transportation's just as important as parks. I pers, and I think transportation's really expensive to build streets and all that. And I really like to have water and sewer in my house, and I'm pretty sure that's expensive, too. And if parks go up to ten thousand dollars someday, which probably will someday, but hopefully not in the near future, we could end up with somebody paying in the neighborhood of three hundred and fifty dollars a month for the permits. That's, that's assuming the total permit fee was sixty thousand dollars. Your payment would be right around three hundred and fifty bucks a month for permits to the city of Albany. Nobody on this council should ever use the term affordable housing in Albany, Oregon, ever again, if that happens. You take the, you gotta have, and I'm not prepared on this, but you gotta, you gotta qualify for a home loan. And when it goes up that astronomically, those who qualify and the cost, I mean, we can make tiny houses, we can make ADUs, but most people in Albany historically have wanted to have a nice home. And even the ADUs, we're gonna prorate them at forty-eight percent, I think somebody said, or earlier, a third on the smaller ones if they're under five hundred feet. But if we raise the price on something five hundred percent and only charge them half, now we're only charging them double what we're paying now. How does that help anybody? I, I'm glad I'm not in your guys' seats. I know there's hard decisions. I know the city has a budget crisis. Everybody knows in Oregon that we don't address the elephant in the room, which is PERS. It's costing everybody so much money with our payroll costs. But the other thing we haven't talked about is you add sixty thousand dollars to, or add forty thousand dollars, then you gotta pay taxes every year on top of that, too. So at fifteen dollars, there's an extra, what, six hundred bucks a month, or six hundred bucks a year you gotta pay for taxes just on the permits that we had to raise. It gets mind-numbing on, please, before you use the methodology to raise the prices somehow, do the math. Figure out, how does that affect your mom, your son, your daughter as they go to build, wanna build a house? And it's gonna be a huge problem. With that, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate your service. You all give it way more effort than I do, and I'm trying not to complain. I'm trying to be positive as much as possible.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you very much. Next is Brad Wilson. And I forgot to tell this to Bill, but please don't use your address. We have it here. I don't want anybody coming to your house in the dark of night and taking your furniture or whatnot, so.
Thank you. Mayor Johnson, Assembly of Councilors, I'm Brad Wilson. Thank you so much for letting me speak today. I'm a local multiple-business owner. I am also a property developer, and I'm currently on the Great Albany Public School Board. So I wanted to duplicate what Bill said a little bit and relate a story. You're kind of looking, if I understand, for some creative methodology to fund parks. And one of the things that I came up with is to, to charge the users. And in this case, I'm gonna say this tongue-in-cheek, because I'm gonna relay a story to you. It's the homeless. My wife has violin lessons every Tuesday, and she goes to what used to be the Senior Center, now it's the...
Riverfront Community Center.
Thank you, Riverfront. And they've had to have a security guard present now to lock the doors, to let people in, because of the amount of homeless people that are trying to get in there. They're routinely having to eject as many as three per class session that are trying to get in there. So they've had to lock it up and lock it down. Two of her orchestra members decided to go for a stroll down the riverwalk one day. They were accosted by a man who told them to get off of his property that was along the river, and literally were chased back to the river center. It's becoming so that the citizens of Albany cannot use their parks. So I don't know why we're building more, because people do not feel comfortable going there. One of my business is better portable toilets. We often put toilets in parks and whatnot for people to use. It's a little-known fact, but we routinely uncover and remove hypodermic needles from heroin-intervent drug users. Oftentimes, we found them fully loaded in the paper, uh, roll dispensers, because we believed that somebody else had sold it and was having somebody else come in there and use that as a drug injection site. The people of Albany are feeling this tension and are not utilizing the parks to their capability. They don't wanna go there unless there's a big crowd and they have some protection. You, you, you would not want to take a date on a riverwalk and stroll down the river right now, because you'd have to put up with all the homeless people that are gonna cost you in Panhandle and try to get money or otherwise be in a situation that would be dangerous. I understand that we're gonna spend another thirteen million dollars on expanding this for the homeless, and I think that's very creative and nice. But it'd be nice if the citizens who are paying for this would actually have the ability to use it and be able to feel safe doing so. So before we go and spend a ton of money on new parks and maintenance of the other ones, and increasing the SDC fees, as Bill stated, is going to be astronomically added to, to the price of, of owning a house, if we could please utilize the ones we have now, would be wonderful. We have beautiful parks. They take very good care of them. I would like to see people feel safe and be able to do so. That's, that's the gist of it. I've got a, unfortunately, a school board meeting I've gotta go to for budget, and I'm gonna take off. But thank you very much for your time. Please give this some serious consideration. I know that we wanna make our parks better, and we wanna have a great, lovable city, and we have a wonderful city, we really do. And, and like Bill said, you guys have a hard choice. There, there's a need for money, and there's a need for growth. But if we squash growth because of increased fees, we, we will just, we will stagnate. And, and I don't know if that's the goal. If, if the goal is to, to tell people, hey, we don't want you coming to Albany anymore. Stop coming. We're gonna make it so expensive you can't live here unless you, you're very rich, then say so. But affordable housing, like Bill said, it's done. I'm gonna have to pass on every single one of those costs, plus the markup, as Bill stated, and it's gonna dramatically increase the cost of a house. And I've got a project getting ready to start in North Albany, and, and I don't know what this will do to it, but it's going to raise it substantially. So we're gonna have to, you know, wait for this to come down before we make a move. Anyways, Assembly of Councilors.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for that. Next is John Robinson.
Good evening. I'm John Robinson. I'll be speaking tonight both as a citizen of Albany and also a general contractor doing business in Albany for sixteen years now. I'd first like to address the SDC methodology presented in the FSC group report. I've read it several times, and I find it quite disturbing. Page eleven of the FSC group report, and I quote, "The city finds that non-residential developments are a significant source of demand for park facilities. We therefore recommended the city begin to charge parks' SDC for non-residential development while continuing to charge parks' SDC for residential development," unquote. There does not appear to be any factual data to support this statement. Furthermore, the report doubles down on this idea. You look on page twenty-five of the report, I quote again, "Because the city has determined that employees create demand for park facilities during work hours, the city may charge its SDC to non-residential development," unquote. Now, I don't know if the statement is identifying people who simply eat lunch in the park or if there are entire herds of people leaving their jobs during the workday to recreate in the park for hours. As a side note, I do remember during COVID that we unbolted basketball hoops from the parks, thus depriving fathers and sons, living together in the same household, from the opportunity to recreate in the parks. Page twelve of the FSC group report, and I quote again, "A person who both lives and works in Albany is allocated seventy-two hours per week of residential availability and ten hours per week of non-residential availability," unquote. Now, I think this is talking about the time that's available to use the parks. Now, there's no mention of how this seventy-two-hour number was derived at. My math is as follows. There's twenty-four hours in a day, seven days a week, so a hundred and sixty-eight hours. Most people work a minimum of forty hours a week. We're recommended to get sleep eight hours a night, times seven days, that's fifty-six hours. So you take the hundred and sixty-eight hours, minus the forty hours for work, minus the fifty-six hours for sleep, and that leaves seventy-two hours a week. This is my best guess as to how this number was derived. The seventy-two-hour number does not take into account the time spent, I don't know, showering, getting dressed, eating, transportation time to get to work, shopping for goods or services, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I don't know where the FSC group got this seventy-two-hour-per-week number, but simple math means seventy-two hours a week divided by seven days is ten-point-two-eight hours per day of available time to spend at the park. Does this number even sound remotely reasonable? Maybe if you don't work or you're retired. Another way to look at it, every day has twenty-four hours. Divide it by eight hours. You get three eight-hour periods. Again, eight hours to work, eight hours to sleep, and eight hours to do everything else. So if there's truly ten-point-two-eight hours of time every day to spend at the park, then it has to cut into your work time or your sleep time. It just doesn't make any sense. Suffice it to say that I object to the SDC methodology brought forth in the report. I do not think we should be charging a non-residential development SDC fee. While I realize you'd just like to address the methodology tonight, the report did provide several suggested dollar figures I wanna comment on. Those figures are provided on page twenty-three of the handout. It's important to understand that SDC fees are pass-through expenses. Builders and developers pass through to the final purchaser. So ultimately, the SDC fee is being paid by the home purchaser in the case of a single-family home. Even more important is the fact that these fees are rolled into the mortgage and actually paid over thirty years. So using an example from table fifteen, five-thousand-two-hundred-nineteen-dollar SDC fee for a five-hundred-square-foot home actually costs the homeowner seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars over time. The ten-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-four SDC fee for a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot home actually costs that homeowner sixteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars over time. So if you care about housing affordability, the amount of the SDC fee should concern you. We have an ongoing housing task force seeking to identify ways to reduce the cost of housing. Part of that effort was listening sessions involving contractors, realtors, lenders, members of the community to provide their input and thoughts. I took part in providing my input at one of those meetings. But at the same time, this effort is going on, we have a parallel effort to raise SDC fees. SDC fees are one of the items identified as having a large impact on the cost of building. It's absurd to me to be doing this at the same time. This is yet another example of why people distrust government. The right hand doesn't seem to know what the left hand is doing. Said another way, we are simultaneously looking at reducing the cost of housing by increasing the cost of SDC fees. Makes no sense to me. As a business owner, I believe we're currently in a recession. Today feels a lot like it did in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight for my business. You see, homeowners are hunkering down. They don't have to remodel the kitchen or bathroom right now. They could postpone that new deck or patio cover. They're concerned about just getting by. Home building is already being impacted by the increase in interest rates, along with the increase in the cost of materials that we've all been dealing with. I also object to the justification process that the city uses every time it wants to increase a fee. The game plan always seems to be roll out a spreadsheet showing other cities that charge more as justification to raise our fees. Why do we want to race to the top of being an expensive city to do business in? It should be irrelevant what other cities charge. The question should be, what is the absolute minimum Albany needs to charge? And then you work diligently to reduce those internal costs, not rest on your laurels. We need to question, how can we encourage business to come to Albany? Unfortunately, this proposal, as presented, will discourage business to locate in Albany, along with discouraging home building. Now, the city does not exactly have a pro-business reputation. I seem to recall a time that Pepsi was proposing to build a plant in Albany. And due to the economy, Pepsi changed their mind, and the city promptly sued them. Not very business-friendly. Sometimes, we just need simple observation. I live near Deerfield Park, and in the last eighteen years, I can't recall a time when the park was crowded. I also drive around the city on a daily basis for my business, and I've noticed other parks. None are ever overcrowded. So here's an idea. Maybe the city can allow some space on the city website where residents can post pictures of all the overcrowded parks. In this way, we could gather some real data and avoid the make-believe data that's found in this current report. in this current report. Now, I'd be the first to agree that every home should have and pay for clean water and safe treatment of sewage through SDC fees. Now, I may, I may disagree at, at times with the dollar amount of those fees, however, these are basic necessities involving the health and welfare of a community. But let's face it, parks are a nicety, not a necessity. Faced with a recession, we should prudently pull back from this ridiculous and expensive SD, SDC scheme. Now, I watched and I listened to the Monday work session that you all had, and you had lots of opinions about the fee and how to encourage building smaller homes. But none of you are builders or developers. So I'm going to ask you to please engage and survey local builders and developers about how SDC fees affect their decision to build. Let's find this out. Now, I can share with you personally that as a builder investor, I'm choosing to build in another community. And one of the factors is lower permit costs and lower SDC fees. Also, there can be a feeling of adversity here at the city with regard to building. The city I'm building in is more welcoming. Now, I'm available to talk more about that individually if you want to know more about it. But that's all I have for this evening and I thank you for your time and listening to me.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Next to speak with us this evening is Michael Quinn.
Mike, Mike Quinn. I don't know if I can beat that or not. You're all responsible adults and if you don't really go ditto on that speech right there, I don't know what else to go by. I mean, I actually got, I was involved with the 1989 legislation with SDCs, how it was created. The only problem with it that a lot of us didn't like is the fact that the city's got to figure the methodology and interpretation of the laws and stuff like that. Let, uh, Bino and West Lynn tried to take it up into the sky and that with their parks fee and they failed. One of the things that I would like to, and I'm sure that he may be listening tonight, but Ed Hodney came into this town and literally, I mean, we, every year we were indexing everything because technically you can't. You're at this point now in the middle of May and you're indexing all these fees. I mean, today it came out again, another 12%. I'm on your task force for affordable housing and even the mayor, I'm not wanting to throw you in that underneath the bus, but you and me have even text each other saying that this isn't what we signed on for because staff has already got the interpretation of what they want to see on it, taxed what we would call the rich. I don't really know a lot of rich people in Albany, but if you got, if you, if you've worked hard your whole life and you want a 2,300-square-foot house, well, let's go ahead and that and move, uh, charge them higher to supplement maybe giving somebody that wants a thousand-square-foot house and that, uh, at a cheaper rate. Nobody's building thousand-square-foot houses, I'm telling you that right now because of the cost of the land and everything else. So the, the thing about is, is that if you looked at when Ed Hodney came in here, this guy literally turned around and we haven't had any raises because we haven't had to. There isn't a director that hasn't come into this city hall and said, nope, we need, you know, because they want to, you know, I hate to say it this way, but they want to be the hero. They want to do program of the month. They want to be able to say, well, you know what, if we raise this here, makes my job easier for the next 10 years until I retire out on my PERS program and stuff. And I'm not knocking that because they deserve it and everything else, but you really got to look at this hard as far as how come did we have an efficient park system and all of a sudden overnight now, all of a sudden we need to triple the SDCs on parks? See where it goes. Go down to the parks and that, like John's talking. You need to go down and visit these parks. I'm a historian of Albany and I guarantee you that some of you think that, well, wait a minute, I'm 100 feet out of the UGB, so I'm not a citizen and stuff like that, but I, I am. I've been here my whole life. And I'm just saying that a lot of the stuff, there's other people in that that, you know, as far as, you can't technically use SDC money to subordinate or take deficiencies off parks that are there. So, but what you're forgetting that, we've got organizations in town that put up park, uh, playground equipment and everything else. Need to check into those guys. They're pretty efficient and stuff. They've got groups. There's already talk about, okay, we're coming out of COVID, now we can get back to our fundraising situation. I personally think, I do not know the parks director here, I knew Ed Hodney and that, and that guy was a superstar for Albany and stuff. Why all of a sudden the change and stuff like that? And especially all these things coinciding with each other, the fact that, well, we finally got, and our mayor and that, let us have an affordable housing task force. It's a joke right now. It really is. And stuff, we're not getting anything. I didn't even go to the last meeting because staff's already got its mind made up and that, that, well, we want to go ahead and get the higher-end houses and that here. And so, but like if you watch, if you watch what people are developing, just like Brian and, and Mr. McHugh back here, nobody's building thousand-square-foot houses unless you guys say yes to it. It's just like right now. On this affordable housing task force, I've told every member in that, that you guys have to make a decision on selling a piece of property down at, uh, the Calipoya Brewery, an acre spot. I told them in that because our task forces identified 610, uh, single-bedroom units needed in Albany and 420 two-bedroom units. I took a development that I have right now and I took them down to two-bedroom duplexes to be the poster child of, you know, we can do this and, and it's, it's successful with planning's help, I'm, I'm going to be successful at. But that Calipoya Brewery thing, I've already told, uh, staff, sell it to me, I'll put in one-bedroom duplexes. There'll only be, you know, 12 duplexes there, but that's 12, 24 units off the, uh, you know, the council, uh, you know, the affordable housing task force that we have. It's a start. I just think we're doing too much talking here and we're not doing anything. And, you know, people come up with ideas. John Robinson, he's, he's a rock star and so, he's a detailist and stuff. What he just told you guys, you really need to take light of this thing and, and end this charade and stuff. For somebody to come in and say 70, I mean, triple your SDC on parks, you guys got to really look at what we have for parks. 53rd Street in 2009 came in here in March and there was a public hearing for them and for raising, you know, uh, billing fees. And it's just the example on how everybody thinks they wanted to raise the billing fees for commercial 50%. They come and ask me outside the door, what would you do, Mike? I said, I'd raise them 300% to prove one thing. You had a mayor at that time that was totally against Walmart and she wanted to, uh, you know, charge them a lot more. The thing about is Walmart, they'll write a checkout for it. You could have went 600% more. So, so I'm just saying that really look at the aspect of what you're possibly going to, you know, it's conflicting with everything we're trying to do right now. I think we, you should disband this housing task force if this is all going to go on. Because like Bill said, when you take and you add, let's just say $10,000 of SDC increases over the next, uh, four years, that's almost $105,000 on a 30-year mortgage. And I have to explain that to people.
So this is about methodology, not rates today? So I'm just letting you know.
I, I get that, but it's all coinciding together and stuff, so. And that's really all I got to say.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
Does anyone else, would anyone else like to speak to this issue? Because next on the agenda, next on the agenda be, um, I declare the public hearing closed at 6:52. Now it's time for council discussion. Council.
I think, uh, given the input we've received from, uh, the citizens here this evening, along with the analysis of the methodology from Mr. Shaw, I, I think we should rethink the methodology.
Okay. Counsel, any other councils? I got five, seven, six, I want six of us. Counselor Nov, Bartholomew and then Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the concerns of everyone because as, as a developer myself, I have.
Counselor, can you speak up, please? Your request, or stop spoken.
Okay. Sorry. As a developer myself, I have been crunching all of these numbers, potential numbers and the impact it would be on the development that I have, that I'm working on. And so I'm concerned about it on a personal level and, but I also am a city councilor who is having to make a decision on how to continue to, to support and finance our infrastructure. And, uh, by allowing ourselves to, uh, look at reasonably charging on the growth and the development that we are having, um, we are also balancing the increased fees on individual citizenships, individual citizens. And this is not an easy balancing act that we're being asked to do. And I'm looking forward to really, uh, grappling with the choices that we have, but I think that we need to dig into that methodology because, uh, we have to find the ability to do this. We have not been doing what we needed to be doing for decades, uh, because we've been a very inexpensive community. And I came here because it was such an inexpensive community. Uh, this is what I could afford and I'm very grateful for that. And I know I couldn't afford it now just because of the regular inflation costs. You know, my house, I couldn't afford now. Um, but, so I don't want to put an excessive burden on folks, um, but we have to make some pretty serious decisions about how to, how to pay for our infrastructure.
Well, are you speaking specifically of parks or just infrastructure?
Uh, sorry, I, I'm not speaking specifically about parks, although parks is, oh, I would like to speak more specifically about parks in that, uh, they do provide a livability factor here. When you just only build houses, 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 um, you feel kind of crowded out, but when you have green space, you have the ability to, um, recreate and, and have the space that you may not have otherwise. I think it's a little short-sighted to, uh, say that parks are not, are a luxury. Because we know that in many cities, the green space and care for those green spaces enhances a city in livability and actually makes it a safer place, uh, to live, um, and lowers crime and those kinds of things. So I appreciate, uh, the struggle that we have before us.
Thank you, Counselor Bartholomew. Counselor Johnson.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate what Mr. Wilson said, uh, about his wife at the roof front center. Um, you know, that's what's going on right now. And I think if we, we need to really think about the, the park SDCs. Again, I'm totally against the ones that, uh, the part of it that we charge businesses more because their employees might use the park. I agree. I, I go around, I drive around and I see in the parks, it's Grand Prairie Park. If there's a half a dozen people in that big park, anytime I go by, sometime, the basketball hoop is probably the busiest and it's nice to see the young people out there. But we can't take care of what we have now, so we do need SDCs, but I think, I, I really don't want to pass anything tonight. I think we need more discussion on it. I know we've been dealing with it for a long time, but now we're getting into the nuts and bolts of it and maybe we need to do some tweaking of it. I don't know. I don't know the answer. I can understand the developers, uh, you know, don't want it raised and stuff like that, but we also do need to take care of them. Um, I, of course, the SDCs are more for new and I don't think we need any more new parks. I really don't. I mean, it's just, uh, if you don't, if people don't use the ones we have, why make more and make it more maintenance for what we have? So I, I just don't think, um, the way it is now, I would definitely vote no. But I would like to maybe, maybe see if we can tweak it a little bit to make it, uh, better. I, I don't know the answer, you know? And I appreciate people realizing that it's kind of hard up here sometimes, you know? But anyway, that's, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Olson.
Yes, I, uh, I, I think neighborhood parks are important. Uh, they're like, uh, neighborhood grade schools. A neighborhood park and a neighborhood grade school will tend to have a neighborhood feeling in the neighborhood. And, uh, I think if we're going to develop new neighborhoods, it's important to have a park there. And I'm, sometimes complain that my neighborhood, but the only park it has is the central school yard, uh, which is a nice, uh, pretty much empty, uh, other than central school, 10 acres, that developers have yearned for over the years and done their best to grab a hold of, and we've kept them at bay. But that's beside the point and isn't, uh, relevant for tonight. But, uh, I, I think that, uh, the neighborhood, uh, park in a residential neighborhood is important. Now, when we start talking about charging businesses, how do we know what that business is going to be in the future? How many people are there? How many people are going to have the capability of using a park? Are they going to be people from out of town or are they going to be, uh, local people? Uh, I can see charging them something, maybe based on the cost of building the new building, but, uh, I, I think it's a very horny problem and I think we need to do some more thinking about it. So, uh, tonight I'm not ready to vote yes on, uh, charging businesses. A parks to develop.
Uh, Counselor Smith, do you have anything? Counselor Kopczynski.
Yeah, so I agree with, uh, Counselor Olson up until we got to the business point, but, uh, Director Ladain mentioned to us and showed us the population changes coming, uh, and where they've got parks being planned, uh, you can't have a community unless you have community parks. And the growth is going to be happening, uh, in the areas where we need parks and we need schools, uh, and they have to be paid for somehow and I have no qualms whatsoever. And moving right along with the methodology that's already been shown because I have not been shown a iota of differences, uh, from the developers that have already approached us. Uh, they've got their viewpoint, uh, and it's a very narrow viewpoint, but I think that we need to think of the whole community, uh, and doing that, uh, and we need to move forward with this methodology.
Counselor Smith, do you have anything?
My comments have been made by Counselor Bartholomew, Counselor Olson and Counselor Kopczynski.
Okay. I would like to say, one, um, when I first saw the packet on Thursday of last week, I was taken aback that the city, this Chamber of Commerce had had two meetings about the SDCs, the parks SDCs before we even got the packet. I guess it's my fault for not searching the website every day, but my concern is, is that the term maximum allowable, I don't like that term. I'm an insurance guy, do not like that term. Second thing is, is that I know for a fact, today's economy, people are working, everyone I know that has a job is not going to a park to have lunch. And I know a lot of people in this city. And so I, I do believe we do need to have a SDC plan that makes sense for parks, but when I hear the term maximum allowable, I freak out. It kind of scares me. Um, and, and another thing is, is that burdening businesses that we want to come here with an additional, I think it was $39 per employee, is that the right number? It was, it was a number, you know, 30, and so if I'm going to, I might use a park, but the hours I do go to work, it's going to be in 15 minutes tops and that's $39 for 15 minutes, that's pretty good rates. So I, I believe, honestly, I don't, I'm not. So I believe, honestly, I don't, I'm not comfortable with this particular framework. I do think we should do more research, and I think that I'd like to see a better plan come back. And, and right now, I cannot support this. And I would like to take, have more discussion about the business portion of this. As a business guy, it would be a burden to me and other people in my, in, in business to pay an additional fee for people that might work or work for a short period of time, and then, and it just, how am I going to grow?
Go ahead, Councilor.
I would like to see us move ahead with the methodology as it relates to residential properties. We could reconsider the non-residential portion of it later, talk about it more, but it has been far too long since we've made any adjustments in the parks methodology. We are way behind. We're not thinking about the future. The changes that are proposed will help us be able to invest in new parks in new areas that don't have parks and would not have them if we did not have this money in the bank to pay for them. So I, I would support separating the non-residential portion from the residential portion and moving ahead with that change.
Ms. Councilor Novak? Okay, go ahead, Peter.
You, you continue your deliberations, but I was concerned that we have a chance to address some of the misperceptions and inaccuracies that were raised previously. And Director Ladain and our contractor are available to you and available to clear up some of that stuff if you will give them a chance.
Okay. Let me take Councilor Novak's comment, and then we'll, I'll go back to Director Ladain.
Thank you. Again, after reviewing the analysis that was presented to us by Mr. Shaw, I think we need to take another look at the methodology. I don't understand why we're comparing ourselves with Portland. We're not Portland. We're not Portland in, in any way. And I, I genuinely take issue with that and that, just the idea that, I mean, I know SDCs for infrastructure makes sense, and I know that parks make things livable. But if we are doing what we're doing in such a way that no one can afford to build anything, you can forget worrying about a community having a park because there won't be a community because no one will be able to afford to build it. We have to find something that will work. And I, I would submit to you, based on what I have seen and heard from members of the community, I don't think this works. It, it seems directly opposed to the mission of the task force.
Thank you. Until Director Ladain, you have a rebuttal or comments?
Sure. So Doug is online, and he, we, Mr. Shaw did provide commentary early enough. And so Doug, it's technical, so I'm going to let you go ahead and take it. Addressing some of the concerns that were brought up in the David Shaw testimony. We can't hear you.
On mute, please. I see a red button, yeah, there you go.
Thank you. In, in the interest of maintaining an elevated discourse, I, I would ask for a more specific question that I would be happy to address.
All right, sure. So some of the questions that came up was, there's no evidence provided for non-residential participants. And so can you explain how the non-residential number comes up and how it's been applied to communities across Oregon?
It is true that the availability hours that you see in the report, they are not empirical. That is absolutely true. That is a framework whose sole purpose is to provide an equitable allocation between residential and non-residential development. And so if you, if you were, had your report available at the bottom of table three on page five, if my old eyes are seeing correctly, the bottom of pay, of table three says that the number of residents per employee is 0.11. That, that is the, that is the end result of that whole analysis of hours, and that 0.11 becomes then the basis upon which costs are allocated between residential and non-residential. You may recall from our discussion two nights ago that the decision tree begins with the question, does non-residential development create a demand on the park system? If the answer is no, then there should not be a non-residential charge, and that, and that is the end of the discussion. If the answer is yes, non-residential development does create demand for parks, then, then you go on to the next round, which is, okay, what is an equitable allocation between residential and non-residential? And that is what that whole analysis of hours of availability. The, the hours of availability are in no way meant to be an estimate of how much time people are actually spending in parks. And, and we tried to make that explicit, but I know it's, it's buried in there, in quite a bit of text there. But the whole point of that is to come up with a, with that 0.11, that, that allocation between residential and non-residential development. Now, if that allocation doesn't seem right to you, then we can tweak the inputs to something that gets closer to what you actually observe. If you have empirical data, if you have sent people out with clipboards to, to talk to park users, maybe that data could be valuable. But, but the truth is, no SDC methodology that I've ever seen or done, you know, includes interviews with park users. So I'm, I'm going to pause there and ask if I've, if I've scratched where you itch on that particular question.
Can I just clarify that that number is not specific to Albany, but that is the factor that's used in calculating parks SDCs for essentially any community in Oregon?
Okay.
That is, yes, that what you see there is the number kind of where we start. There are, there are a number of communities that use this non-residential methodology, and, and this is kind of where it starts. I remember early, early on, the first few times I did this, the, the allocation to non-residential was slightly higher. And in through conversations with clients, what you see now is, is where things have, have coalesced over many iterations of, of use. I do have, from time to time, you, I will run across, across a client who would really, because of the dynamics or politics of, of their particular city, they would prefer to allocate as much cost as possible to non-residential and, and free up residential as much as possible. And I, I can't, we can't justify that on, with an honest look at who is likely to be using, who is likely to be available to the park system. And so we use this as a framework to, to create a credible allocation rather than just sticking all the cost where we would prefer. Having said that, if what you see is contradictory to what you observe, then we can, we can tweak it. And furthermore, if you don't think non-residential development creates demand on parks, then you shouldn't have a non-residential charge at all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Director. So I'm going to ask the question. Would the Council like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the 2022 Park System Development Charge methodology with the exclusion of the non-residential component. Bring that back for, for further consideration.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no?
I'm saying no because I believe we need to look at the whole of it, not just the non-residential aspect.
So I believe the motion passes, five to one. Is that correct, Allison? Okay, thank you very much. And we're going to bring it back and talk about the non-residential side. And please keep in mind, thank you, Director.
No problem.
Please keep in mind that as a city councillor, as the mayor, we must have sight for stuff going on right now, infrastructure, parks, fire, things like that, safety. But we also have to have vision for the future. And that's one of the things that this does for us, is vision for the future.
I think we all need to point out, too, that we're going to talk about the size of the fees later on, too.
Yes. And that's coming back later on. Okay, thanks you.
But I like the method where we graduate from a lower amount for a smaller house and a bigger amount for a bigger house.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Olson. Next on the agenda is sale of public property, a property 401 Main Street Southeast.
That was removed from the agenda.
No, it was not.
It wasn't?
No, it wasn't.
Okay.
I'll explain. So what it was is that the, next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing on the sale of 401 Main Street. The directions are put in the, how to submit, testify and submit were, written materials were published on the Council's agenda. I declare a public hearing open at 7:15 PM. Does the staff have a report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have received two offers on this, and Chris Bailey, Director Bailey's coming up to talk to you a little bit about it. But my recommendation would be to you to continue the public hearing after you hear from anybody in the audience that would like to address the subject, that you keep it open until the 22nd of June to allow us to find out if there's any more people that are interested in the property that's at 401 Main Street. We had one offer that came in rather late in the day, so that makes two, and we have reason to believe that there may be others. So there's good reason to keep it open till, till a date certain.
Date certain, June 22nd?
Right. But I, I would recommend that you also hear from Chris if she's got anything to add.
Director Bailey, go ahead and fill us in, please.
I have nothing else to say.
You're killing me over there with that.
Good job, Chris. Very long day.
So there's no staff report. I will now call on those who signed up to speak. Jan Baldwin, or so, should I, Peter, can we go ahead and?
Certainly Mr. Baldwin can speak. We'll just keep the hearing open and, if, if that's amenable to the council.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. You don't need to give us your address because I don't want everybody calling your house or whatever.
On several commercial properties here in Albany, one of which is 503 Main Street, which are the big green warehouses that the school district had forever. I've owned those for about five years and little by little developed plans to renovate them in the manner in which I renovated the old Salvation Army building and turned it into a Class A commercial lease building. So had plans all drawn up, I had not figured in the church property becoming available in my original plans, and then it did become available. And so before I moved forward, was submitting for a building permit, and I, for the last two years, have been planning on getting my project done by fall. I have some tenants all sign up with leases and have financing and, you know, have some balls in the air here. So I look at this church property and think, okay, well, that'd make a great amenity. It's a natural extension of this development for the community, from the community's perspective. You know, as you drive down Main Street or San Am and that intersection, beautifying that piece of property and, and using it as amenity to my project, I think makes sense. I'll quickly go through some of the highlights of the material I've submitted. We took a look at this property in depth. When I, when I looked at the, at the appraised value of it, it, it didn't seem right or incorrect, seemed incorrect to me. So the architect that I'm working with took a good look at it in terms of how it could be developed. And the Albany codes for parking and for setback and buffer and vehicular access standards really limit the potential use of the site. It's the best that we can figure with the allowable uses and the parking requirements to go with those uses and the ingress egress requirements with the setbacks and the buffers and my property line of the green warehouse, which is 20 feet into that triangle. Really scratch your head on how somebody could build a building there, put parking on it, have access to it, and lease it for anywhere close to the cost of the development. To compound the complexity of developing that site, the church basement was filled in with riprap and rubble. I watched it being filled in. It was not an engineered fill, no geotechnical person was on site, it wasn't compacted in lifts even. The city did drive their machine down in there, but as most of us probably realize, the per square foot weight of the tracks of a, any given excavator is not much, it's the way they're designed. So it's not compacted. So if you were to load it with a building and that particular area where the church was is the only spot on the site where a building could be built, you'd have to excavate all of that out of there, just demolish the basement walls and hire geotech to engineer the fill. You wouldn't have to do that for a parking lot because light duty cars really don't have much weight, and you could put a three inch lift of asphalt down and you'd be fine. So given all of the challenges, it's really not practical to build a building there. The cost of developing the site, what I, in my words, I would say doing it right, which is the way I like to do things, is developing the main street front edge, putting that pocket park in there as my plan shows, eliminating the curb cuts there that are less than 200 feet from the intersection, and directing all the traffic to all three developments, which would be serviced by the driveway, all of which I would own, through the one main access of, of the entrance where you entered to get to my office, Baldwin General, and the green warehouses. My architect, Gary, has, has worked all of that out, and, and that is in your packet. I know we're going to move this forward, and you'll probably hear, we'll probably hear testimony again, so I won't go, go too long into it other than, just as, so I do a lot of public work. When you bid a public job, the procurement process is, you also bid your bids, submitted on time. Anybody that comes in late, you know, the public notice was out there. You don't get to say, well, gee, I didn't know. Now, I know, and I, I understand that your rules are different on this, and, you know, I'm plugged into the public bidding process. But I did do my homework, and I did submit on time, and I became aware after my submission, and unfortunately, I don't have time to read the paper, that the amount that I offered became public knowledge. So that gave other people the opportunity to bid higher than me. And if I'm the community, I would weigh the incremental dollar differences in the offers with my understanding of the merits of the property, the merits of my intended improvements to the property and the highest best use to serve the community of that property, which is not just what's sitting on the property, but also the way the traffic and pedestrians move around it and interact with it, and the way that it beautifies that particular part of the community, which has been blighted in the past and is now really starting to, to be something. So that concludes my testimony.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baldwin.
Listen, I appreciate it.
We also appreciate your patience while all that excavation and moving the church went on as well, because I know it probably impacted your business a little bit.
Yeah, we, we were all taking odds in Vegas on whether that church was going to make it. We're all watching it go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Scott Letman. Is he still here?
Yes, he is. My name is Scott Letman, 100 Ferry Street. I'm the other offer that has been proposed in the property. Candace and I have looked at it, and it has utility for things that we do, so. Uh, Candace and I have looked at it and it has, uh, utility for things that we do, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, does anybody else, no, no one else signed up to speak? Does any other member of the audience wish to speak on this topic? Okay, council discussion.
Let's continue it to June.
We have a, is that a motion?
If you need one.
So I, if you're gonna motion to reject the bids and bring it back on the twenty-second, it'd be great.
I don't think we're rejecting bids, I think we're, uh, keeping the record open to welcome more.
We can, we can do it one of two ways. You can, you can vote tonight to reject the bids and keep this hearing open until the twenty-second, or you can just let both the people who have bid know that they're not, they're not, uh, stuck on the bids they have. They can change their bid, so, because their bids have been made public now, so that it's not fair to have them set.
I think we should reject them.
If they wanna come back and, and bid a different amount, they can do that, so. That make sense?
I will make a motion to reject the bids we've received and keep the hearing open and see what happens. It's probably not a scientific motion.
No, June twenty-second.
June twenty-second.
So, I have a motion?
Just to clarify, that's allowing them to keep their bids as the baseline and they could move up from that if they so chose.
Correct. We have a motion and second, go ahead, Mr.
Yes, we do. That, and, and this wasn't exactly the normal way. We don't have to go through requests for proposals to sell real estate. We could sell it on, we could list it with a real estate agent and sell it that way. Um, if you recall back when we did, we sold the, um, the armory building and the old police station to the county, uh, we went through, I don't believe we went a bidding process, but it was public knowledge, we were going to sell it and people made offers. And the county, obviously, I think was the only offer. I'd have to get back with, I'm not even sure who'd ask about that now, but I believe they were the only offer. Um, but in this case, we're not required to go through requests for proposals. Um, yeah, so we, we, we could just, we could just make it, we, all we're required to do is have a public hearing and let people know that this property is going to be sold and then people can come in and, and make, uh, offers that they want. In this case, since we've already had these bids, what I would recommend is that we set a deadline now that we have had a public hearing on this. Um, we're gonna come back and, uh, and continue the hearing on the twenty-second and maybe set a deadline for the week before.
June fifteenth.
Yeah, June fifteenth, give the council an opportunity to review the bids and anything that goes with those bids, like the proposed uses and whatnot. And then anybody can still testify at the hearing on the twenty-second, but you'll at least have an opportunity to review the bids and so.
So, uh, tonight is our public hearing on it?
Well, it's half of our hearing.
We're gonna have the, we're gonna continue the hearing and do it, we're gonna keep this hearing open.
And did we advertise this, uh, public hearing?
We advertised this hearing and that's why we're continuing the hearing instead of having a new hearing because we're, we're gonna continue it to a date certain, so we don't need to advertise again because at this point, the public who was interested would have, should have been here and, and, and we may have more because I think some people were made aware of this sale by Hasso's blog. Um, and I think that there'll probably be another write-up of this either in the Democrat Herald or, uh, Hasso's blog again and, and give the public, uh, more awareness of what's going on and be more transparent.
Do you think we ought to ask Hasso not to spill the beans beforehand?
Well, in that case, on a sale, it's, it's a little different, um, and that's one of the reasons why I don't recommend doing a request for proposals because usually requests for proposals is when we're bidding a project. And so you have contractors bidding on a project, if those bids are, the, the time, five o'clock Friday or whatever, then all the bids are open. Um, in this case, we, we didn't do it that way. I mean, and we weren't really, didn't need to do it that way. Um, we, we could put this out there for sale and it's, you know.
I think it's been common knowledge, once that church is gone, it's gonna be.
Correct, well, yeah, I think so.
So, let's go ahead and move on.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the last thing I'd point out is we're not required to accept the highest proposal on this sale either as, as when we're doing requests for proposal on bids for projects, this, this is not the same thing. We can take the highest amount, the lowest amount or something in the middle. Uh, it's completely up to the council, so, but I know we have a second, so.
So, staff will come back with a report, I, I would guess.
I don't think there's a.
There's no report needed.
Point, I think we, we may hear from the people who bid on it again of what their proposed use will be. And, and that, then the council can decide what they wanna do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second on bringing this back on the twenty-second of June. We're gonna leave the public hearing open, uh, and the bids will be preferred, we'd like to have the bids on the fifteenth, by the fifteenth of June. So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Nope, so we'll see you on the twenty-second, thank you. So the public hearings are remain open. So next, item C, Justin Gross' annexation request, uh, AN dash zero 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 one dash twenty-two and ZZ zero one, uh, dash two-two, David Martino, pages forty-two through seventy-nine, your packet, uh, proclaiming, uh, annexation and withdrawing annexed property from the fire, rural fire district. I have to read the opening statement. Uh, next on the agenda, we just did that legislative and quasi judicial public hearing regarding planning files AN zero one dash twenty-two and ZZC zero one twenty-two. The proposal is annexation of twenty-two acre property with concurrent zone map amendments to the residential single-family RS five and residential, uh, medium density RM zoning districts. The annexation will also remove the property from the taxing district of the Albany Rural Fire Protection District. I call to order this legislative and quasi judicial public hearing at seven thirty PM. If you wish to testify, uh, there were three options available which were described on the agenda. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Okay, no one wishes to declare a conflict of interest, does any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? We asked that question. Does, do any members wish to report an ex parte contact? Does, do any members wish to report a site visit? Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceeding? Nope. Does any member wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or the participation of any council member in the hearing and the decision? If so, please raise your hand if you're attending in person. If you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. If you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name and so you can be called upon. No comments? At this time, I call the reading of the meeting procedures.
Thank you. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, um, if you later wanna raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court.
At this time, I call on the staff report from project planner David Martino.
Thank you, good evening. Um, so the, um, let's see. So the property in question tonight is a twenty-two acre, uh, unaddressed parcel, which is located south of Ellingson Road, together with a request to apply the medium density residential zoning and the single-family residential RS five zones to the property. The property is currently located within the urban growth area and is contiguous to the city limits on the east side. The applicant is Justin Gross, represented by land use planner Laura LaRocque of Udell Engineering. So the map on the left shows that the property is designated urban residential reserve in the Albany Comprehensive Plan. The map on the right shows that the property is bordered by RS five zoning to the east. Property to the north remains under Lynn County's jurisdiction and is zoned UGA, UGM twenty. So the process for a type four review, in this case for an annexation, is both legislative as well as quasi judicial. Uh, the decision-making criteria are found in, uh, the Development Code, section two point one one zero. And for the zoning map amendment, the criteria is found in two point seven four zero. And so agency notices were provided, public notices were sent and posted on the property. The planning commission held a hearing on May second and made a recommendation. And then tonight here, uh, we're presenting this for city's, city council's consideration. And each of the review criteria are addressed in the staff report. So this annexation request meets all four criteria. The property is eligible to annex, it's timely to annex since the site has access to public streets and will have access to utilities, adequate planning has occurred in terms of comprehensive plan map designation and anticipated future development and is reasonable to annex provided that city council makes that determination. So the applicants also applied to amend the zoning designation of the property. This request was again evaluated with the zoning map amendment review criteria in section two point seven four oh of the Development Code. Now, according to the South Albany Area Plan, the northwest side of Justin Gross's property is designated for medium density residential zoning. The proposed, uh, I'm sorry, and the remainder of the property is designated low density residential zoning. The proposed RM and RS five zones are consistent with these designations. A roundabout is proposed for the intersection of Ellingson and Lochner Road and by twenty thirty, Ellingson will be likely improved for two lane travel and a center turn lane. Eventually, the property will be served by a road network located south of Ellingson, as illustrated in the South Albany Area Plan. So notice of the hearing, uh, went out to property owners within three hundred feet, April eleventh. Staff report was posted online, uh, on, uh, our website since April twenty-fifth. Two newspaper notices were published and the site was posted at one location on, uh, April twenty-fifth. We've received one letter of comment prior to the May second planning commission hearing and a count, a copy of that letter has been provided to council. And then three people testified, um, at the, uh, May second hearing. And, uh, the first person was Brian Peterson of twelve fifty-two Ellingson Road. And he has, uh, rather asked staff, uh, how the sewer line could affect his property's line and if homes would be built up against his property and if any adjacent property would be doing any building. We also heard from Carl Bond of six ten Ellingson Road. And he spoke of the decision to move to the area and shared concerns about the number of homes being built in the area. Um, and I think that's because, uh, the property had been in the county and so county zoning would have only allowed one dwelling unit per five acres. Um, but within urban growth area, the properties are eligible to annex and could develop at city urban style densities. And then finally Gordon Gunther of five forty Ellingson Road spoke against the application, saying that there wasn't proper drainage for stormwater, uh, that additional people would be an issue and was concerned about contamination of a well. Uh, but these are issues that fall outside of simply doing the annexation and the zone change and would be addressed later at the time of site was, uh, developed. So in conclusion, the subject property is eligible for annexation as it's contiguous to the city limits. It's located within Albany urban growth boundary and it could be served by public services. Also with this annexation, the subject property will be removed from the taxing district of the Albany Rural Fire Protection District. So in conclusion, staff, uh, analysis finds that the timely availability of utilities and infrastructure make this twenty-two acre property an ideal candidate for development. On balance, the evidence supports, uh, annexation and assigning the zoning designations of RM and RS five to this, uh, subject property. So in conclusion, as proposed, the staff or the application satisfies all of the applicable root review criteria as outlined in this report, therefore, staff and the planning commission recommends approval of this request.
Thank you very much, um, David. Do any members, council members have clarifying questions regarding the staff report?
Yes, before.
Well, I got a yes.
Could I clarify something with Mr. Martino? David, are you requesting, gonna require or request the condition be the annexation agreement?
Yes, um, so that is something, I think, in the motions that we would bring that up, the condition for the annexation agreement.
Me or him?
Either one of you, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear either one of you.
So can you repeat, yes?
So the question I asked was, normally when we do annexations like this, we enter into an annexa, we make a condition of the annexation where the, the developer will enter into an annexation agreement with the city. Uh, this was not one of the requirements that the planning commission had heard, it wasn't put in the packet and apparently, um, we have requested that on numerous others and we just did one almost right by this property where, which was Chad Curry's property, where we entered into an, where making that a condition as well. So tonight, I, I think David and, and the staff would request as a condition of the annexation, if the city, uh, council decides they do wanna annex this property, that one of the conditions be, uh, that they're, the developer enter into an annexation agreement with the city as well.
So would that be part of the motion?
That would be part of the motion, correct.
Okay, thank you. So council, I think Councilor Kupczynski, Councilor Novak.
Councilor Bartholomew, Councilor Johnson. Did you raise your hand, or is it over here?
Okay.
Wanna talk with us about this?
I'm trying to get the order down. So let's go Councilor Kupczynski and then Councilor Novak.
Can you go back to your conclusion page, just got the photograph, the overhead. Now, did I hear you write that the, part of the planning process down the road was to have a roundabout there at the corner of Lochner and Ellingson?
That's correct.
Would that have to, would the city then have to acquire property at the opposite corners to, uh, make that happen?
That's also correct, but those, uh, the properties, for instance, to the west are in the urban growth boundary. And so at some point in the future, should that property annex, they would also likely be a party to that roundabout to participate in the development of it.
They would have to have active participation in that, just like we had the problems up at Quarry trying to make a roundabout, so, yeah. Okay, thank you.
As your mic, raise your mic on?
Yeah, it's been on.
You were just a little bit off mic, these, these don't have a range at all, you have to be right on them or, or you don't.
You gotta bring them very close to your mouth.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to bring them really close to your mouth.
Yeah.
So did somebody want me to repeat the whole thing?
Yeah, please, just, let's give us.
My, my question was on the, on the photograph showing, uh, the corner of Ellingson and Lochner, uh, that's where, um, Mr. Martino inferred that there was going to be a roundabout down the road at some point in time because of traffic event, and development. And my question was, was that going to then require, uh, acquiring extra, extra property around those corners to make that happen? Because those are, it looks like they're on private property, on private property right now. And the answer is down the road eventually, they would have to be involved with that process.
So, and the answer was an affirmative, correct?
That's correct.
An affirmative, okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Novak.
Thank you. Uh, my question is, you had mentioned, sir, first of all, that we do have, oh, forgive me, I just forgot the term, hookup, public work, where are you? So there, there's utilities out there for development, which is, did I hear that right?
Uh, they could be made available at the time of development, but it's, it does so incrementally.
Okay, well, I think that's potentially a really good thing, but the other half of that is you mentioned that we had some people who live in the area come and testify that they were not so sure that this wasn't going to impact them negatively. So my question is, um, what sort of recourse do they have or do they? How does this, how does this affect those folks who testified early on that they weren't so sure they wanted this annexation to take place?
Well, at the hearing that night, uh, the planning commission, I explained that there's a distinction between those properties that are located within urban growth boundary and those that aren't. And that at, at some point in the future, everything that's located in the urban growth boundary, at least theoretically, would develop at urban level scales. And that is part of the root of Oregon's land use laws because the trade-off that the law carried with it when it was adopted in nineteen seventy-three is we wanna preserve our farm and forest land. It's important, we need to grow our food, we need to protect our resource areas. In exchange for that, we then direct urban growth to certain areas where they can accommodate that growth with utilities, with streets, with, uh, urban level services. And so this is at the, uh, at the outermost boundary of the, uh, urban growth boundary. So the southerly line here that you see in yellow is also the urban growth boundary. So those properties. So, those properties to the south are outside the urban growth boundary and would likely remain in agricultural production use for years to come, realizing, however, that on the inside of the urban growth boundary, it will develop with urban level development.
Thank you. So, those individuals do have that understanding as well, then?
Well, you know, and I think part of it too is, they're used to seeing what they see out their window, and, you know, it's tough. It's really, I mean, we're very sympathetic to that, I know I am, when it comes to that kind of distinction between the types of developments out there. So, we presented that at the hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Council Olson.
Yeah, so, this is coming in as an RM zone.
Right, let me show you on the slide. So, on this particular slide, the area that's in the circle, about the northwesterly quadrant of this property is in the RM designation, so it would be at a medium density residential zone. The rest of it would, that you see in yellow, would be a lower density, like an RS five type of a zone.
So, RM, that allows what, four or five story apartment house?
In the RM zone, the maximum building height's forty-five feet, so they could probably do a three story apartment if they were, if they were doing apartments. But anything higher than three story would probably not, not meet the development code.
And that would probably be all rental property.
If they're apartments, yeah, it could be. Or they could be townhomes.
And the R five, that's the smallest lot that we usually have for a single family zone.
Right, that would be five thousand square foot minimum average lot size. But in that zone, you could have a single family detached residence, or you could have any of those middle housing choices, like a duplex or triplex, townhomes, those types of uses could also now be in the RS five zone.
So, five thousand square foot lot, would you build a triplex on that?
The triplex, I believe, would need about seven thousand square feet, but it would be allowed in that zone.
But these are five thousand square foot lots?
Well, the zoning would be five thousand square foot minimum average lot size. So, that means that the majority of the lots would have to be five thousand or above.
Or above.
But they haven't come in with a subdivision proposal, so we don't know yet what their lot layout might look like.
Well, I see our town going more and more and more to just rental housing, and I think it's a unfortunate situation, so. But I guess that's where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Olson. Any other councillors? Okay, so, we will now take testimony from the applicant. Would the applicant please state your name and make any comments you may have for the council? And I'm not going to ask you to put your address out there in space, because it's where we live in.
Okay, good evening, Albany City Council, thank you. My name is Laura LaRocque. My office address is six five East Astor Street in Lebanon. I am the applicant's representative, I work with UDL Engineering and Land Surveying. So, thank you, David, for giving an overview of the application. I don't think there's too much more I can add to that overview, I thought it was well done, and mentioned all the most applicable parts. The only thing that I will mention is that we started the application review process with the city of Albany back in July sixth. Any sort of application that you do, you're required to have a pre-application meeting to discuss any items that might come out from the review process, at least what you can identify early on in the stage. It's hard to talk in the mic and look at all of you, so I'm going to try to just stay forward, but I'm sorry, I can't make eye contact. So, it's a little frustrating tonight, after nearly a year process involved in this application, to hear an annexation agreement is being discussed. This is something that I would feel that should come out much earlier in the review process, especially when the applicant and the owner are deciding to move forward with what's a very costly application and process. So, tonight, I'm just hearing this, five minutes ago, an annexation agreement would be required with this application. I haven't heard any findings that support that, haven't heard any of the reasoning from city staff or the city attorney to support why an annexation agreement, only just to mention that it's been done in the past. I can also name a number of applications for annexations that occurred recently that have not had an annexation agreement attached to them. I can also point out that there's a Development Code reference in the Albany Development Code, section two point one zero five, that talks about annexation agreements, and it uses the word "may." So, it is not a requirement of an application. So, without the city's justification of why it would be required, and with the suggestion that it could be done, but not a requirement, I would just want more information to this, so I'm just a little blindsided on this issue. So, with that, I'll wrap up my presentation, turn it over to others that might have some comments and questions, and then, of course, have the opportunity to talk more with the city council, unless you have questions that I can address at this time.
The next question is, do we have questions for you?
Yes.
So, do any council members have questions for the applicant? Thank you.
I guess, being naive, I guess I would ask, why would there be a concern about being annexed?
An annexation contract is an agreement that's typically negotiated. I don't know what those terms or what the city might be thinking, so the concern is just the uncertainty of it.
The concern is what? I'm sorry?
The uncertainty of what a contract would be entered into. I don't even know what the suggested condition of approval states at this moment. So, a broad requirement to have an agreement, an annexation agreement, is a contract, and to not know the provisions or the reason behind that is what would be concerning.
City attorney, could you give us some clarification?
Laura's correct. An annexation agreement is a contract between the developer and the city. The last annexation we did, I believe, was Chad Curry's property. The city council required, as a condition of annexation, that Mr. Curry enter into the annexation agreement with the city prior to being annexed. That's still being negotiated right now, as a matter of fact. We have not completely crossed all the, he, it just cuts out. I'm like right on this thing. Director, Community Development Director, Matthew Rutgers, would be here tonight to advocate very strongly to why we need an annexation agreement and was going to be here. He had a medical emergency with his three-year-old, and they're up at Portland at Dornbeckers right now, so they're not able, he was not able to be here tonight. If the council is wanting more information on that, I would suggest entaping this till the next hearing and till the next meeting, and have Matthew back in here where he can explain more in detail why we need it. But it does cover some important stuff, and so, I think from the city's standpoint, it's possible that we get that, so.
So, it looks like Ron Irish just came on the screen. Did you want to talk to that, Ron, or no?
I can't. I did talk with Matt before the meeting, and I have had some discussions with the developer about what might be the terms of an annexation agreement. So, there's been earlier mention that at the corner of Ellingson and Lochner, there's plans for a future roundabout. And as you also heard, there won't be sufficient rideaway to construct it initially with this development. We will lack rideaway on the west side, west two quadrants of the road. And so, a big chunk of what the Curry annexation agreement dealt with is that development's contribution towards that future roundabout, and we were looking for a way to avoid having to construct that roundabout, for instance, with an LID in the future. So, our SDC methodology, our Transportation SDC methodology, identifies that roundabout is being funded fifty percent by city funds, so SDC funds, with the other fifty percent coming from development. And so, with four quadrants on the roundabout, you would assume, you know, each quadrant would pay for roughly an eighth of the cost of that roundabout, balance being made up by the city. And so, the annexation agreement with the Curry development is laying out a framework for how we will negotiate that cost sharing with an eye towards avoiding a future LID. It would involve all of the future owners that might be involved in the development at some point. And so, that would be the same framework that we would look at with this property. We have had some discussions with the owners over the past couple of weeks, they seemed interested in that option. They like the idea of having a development agreement that kind of formalized what their obligation for the intersection was, as opposed to having a petition and waiver recorded over all of the lots, that they would then have to explain to future purchasers. And so, that's the, that's the basis for the staff interest, anyway, and looking towards an annexation agreement.
Does that clarify things for you?
Well, I'm a bit confused, because they're talking about conversations with the developer, and the property owner that I represent has not had these conversations with the cities, so I feel like they may be confusing this development proposal and this property with an adjacent site that's across the street that has similar intentions and interests. So, if they're confusing that matter, I just want some more clarifications, because we have not talked about a development proposal with the city staff, as far as I'm aware.
So, should we ask, can we ask them to have the conversation with staff before we put that on them, or?
Could you ask the owner to have it?
Can they explain the process?
Certainly, before, I mean, if you want to, like I said, if we wanted table this decision tonight until they've had an opportunity to talk that.
Being blindsided, I'm not akin to that, so if you don't mind, we could table this discussion until you've had a chance to go through that.
I appreciate your suggestion, and we definitely don't mind to make thoughtful decisions about important things such as contracts. Again, I'm just going to voice my frustration for having this application before staff for nearly twelve months, and it's now being discussed at this stage in the game. It seems a little lack of foresight, and, I mean, if you can just imagine that the time and the expense and the process that we have gone through to get to this point, to ask for another continuance, to drag out a land use review for another couple of months, it was all something that I feel could have done much sooner.
So, could we bring this back on the eighth? After those conversations, would that be?
Yeah, this, this meeting's been advertised, if we don't, to pub.
Say again?
If we don't close public hearing, or, excuse me, if we don't, like, decide, make a motion tonight to do something different, we can just continue this hearing until the eighth, and then we don't have to re-advertise it.
It's two weeks, but it'll get you a chance to have that conversation.
I understand, but it puts me in a difficult position. I mean, a continuance is more time, and there's other alternatives that can resolve the same issue. So, if you read the staff report and the findings that are embedded in, within the staff report, it talks about development agreements and things that can take place at the time a development proposal is put in place. So, there's other opportunities to address the issues that staff might address through an annexation agreement, and other avenues that wouldn't delay this applicant, especially with the time involved that we've already had with that. So, my request would be to continue the hearing process at this point.
I was just trying to make.
Yeah, I understand, and I appreciate your suggestions, but other things that staff are not bringing to your attention is that there are development agreements, there are improvement agreements, there's items that could be addressed at different stages of development. An annexation agreement is only one mechanism that the city has at their disposal, so perhaps you might want to talk more about staff or other opportunities before just making the decision to continue the hearing.
Well, thank you for your feedback. Do you have any comments, David?
Sure. I don't know if it was because we're just ships in the night passing by, but going into the process, I believed that what we would be doing is looking at this really at the time of development, requiring contribution to the roundabout. I think that there had been more conversations recently between staff related to the two properties to the north that are in the middle of being, or will be coming through for an annexation. And in their discussions, I think that they found that having an annexation agreement makes it more palatable, to make it more certain what is being guaranteed as far as what the contribution would be to a roundabout. I did speak with Matthew Rutgers before council meeting this evening, and he did mention that if, if this is not a palatable solution to have an annexation agreement, that we could actually defer the improvements to the time of development. So, he mentioned that that's something that we can make that call.
So, thank you. Counsel, what would you like to do? Any other, you have any questions for the applicant first before we go on to the next thing? Okay.
Sir?
Yes.
I would like to do whatever makes it most fair for the applicant.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that you do, as the city attorney suggested, and table it. Mr. Rutgers should be here to comment on this. I don't know that that's an acceptable thing to do, to defer this. An annexation agreement is probably the preferable way to go, but until we hear from Mr. Rutgers, you can't, it doesn't sound like you have the information needed to make that. So, I would suggest tabling it for the moment.
Counsel, you guys agree with that?
I'd make a motion to table the discussion until the next council meeting.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no.
I, I'm going to say no, because I don't think that's what, I think you were asking to move forward with alacrity, right? You don't want to put this off any longer than you have to, and Mr. Martino suggested that there's something else we can do. I'm not trying to make life hard for anyone, I just don't understand the workings of this situation, I guess, so.
And I think response to that is, I can understand that emergency happens, and it's unfortunate that Matthew cannot be here and has to deal with a medical emergency. But again, my stance is that Matthew and other staff did have over a year to talk about these things, and to talk about them now, within a week or two of whenever this is going to be continued, it just feels really short sighted.
So, we're going to have this open till the eighth for public hearing, and thank you for your input, but we, I would prefer having my, our community development directors speak to that issue. So, do I continue this, or are we done with this? Okay.
We're done with that for tonight.
So, we'll reopen, we'll reopen when Matthew comes back at item twelve, I believe, and then we'll have, we'll get that sorted out and move forward. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Marin Street Rezone, I'm going back to the document.
Sir?
Yes.
Forgive the interruption, but it's been two hours, may we have a short break?
Yes, I'm so sorry, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and take a ten minute break, and we'll come back and finish up. And Bessie, Council Johnson, would that give you time to get home? Okay, so, you'll do ten minutes, you'll be okay? I know you, I know you need to go, so. Are you going to stick around? We don't have much left. Okay, thank you. Please take ten minutes, we'll be back at eight twelve PM. Thank you very much for reconvening the meeting. We're back on air, thank you very much. Peter, the city manager would like to make a quick statement.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Now, I, I've got my mouth right up against this microphone, and you, I presume you can hear me okay? I'm even speaking a little bit louder. But I'm asking for the sake of two people, one, Matt Harrington in the booth there, and the other, Hasso Herring, that you put the mic up to your mouth like this too when you speak. Counsel Olson, you have to, you can slide it back towards you, get it real close to your lips, and keeping in mind that this is how, this is what the clerks are going to listen to when they try to type out the minutes. So it's very, very important that we act the sound right.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a quasi judicial public hearing regarding planning file ZC 02-22. The proposal is for zoning map amendment specific to two parcels of land totaling 6.3 acres inside the city limits for future development. I call to order the quasi judicial public hearing at 8:13 PM. If you wish to testify, there are three options available, which were described on the agenda. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report an ex parte contact? Do any members wish to report a site visit?
I drove by last week.
So you drove by last week? Thank you. Do any members? So we have two people that visited, Counsel Bartholomew and Counsel Smith. Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceeding? Does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or the participation of any council member in this hearing or this, and decision? If so, please raise your hand. If you are attending in person, if you are attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon, or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called out, called upon. At this time, I call for a reading of the meeting procedures.
For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards that staff will describe or other criteria. I should know this by heart.
You should.
In the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision, if additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government boards designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court.
At this time, I call on the staff report from project planner, David Martinau.
It's me again, hi. Thank you. Good evening. So summary of the request, this is an application, it's a request to rezone two parcels totaling 6.30 acres from RM to RMA, which means medium density residential and then medium density residential attached. And the property is located at 2350 and 2398 Marion Street Southeast. The applicant is Paul Spies, represented by land use consultant Lindsay McLean Godwin of MSS Incorporated. So the properties in question have a comprehensive plan map designation of medium density residential. And you'll see just to the properties to the north as well as the south have that same medium density residential plan designation. Both the RM and the RMA zones are compatible with the medium density residential designation. To the east across Marion Street, the paler yellow color is, represents the single family low-density residential plan designation. And the properties to the west shown in purple are designated as light industrial. So the surrounding land uses here include the new Greater Albany Public Schools bus transportation facility, which is being constructed to the west. And then to the north, there's duplexes and single-family dwellings, and also to the south and the east. Now, low-density dwellings that are up to the north of this site have the potential to transition into higher-density residential development as they are presently zoned medium-density residential. So the process is a type four quasi judicial process, and so the decision-making criteria are found in the development code under section 2.740. So agency notices, public notices, the property was posted, planning commission held a public hearing on May 2nd, and their recommendation is what you're considering here tonight. Each of the review criteria are also addressed in the staff report. So the public notice went out April 12th to properties within 300 feet. Staff report was posted since April 25th. Property was posted in two locations, and we did have some testimony that came at the planning commission public hearing. And the testimony that was presented at the planning commission included building setback questions, water runoff, impacts to property value, and then a fence line dispute between two property owners. After considering testimony and rebuttal testimony, the planning commission voted four to one to recommend approval of the zone change. So in conclusion, staff analysis finds that the requested RMA designation is consistent with the site's comprehensive plan designation of medium-density residential. It's most likely that this site will be developed with multifamily units. On balance, the evidence supports assigning the zoning designation of RMA to the subject property. And so therefore, our recommendation is that we do recommend, between staff and the planning commission, approval of this request.
Thank you. At this time, do any council members have clarifying questions regarding the staff report? Hearing none?
Public testimony on this, the planning commission?
That's true.
Did anybody testify in favor of it?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils have anything?
Do we have their testimony?
Well, that's not for us.
Oh, for the planning commission?
We have, they, we have it in our packet, this stuff they recommended. So no one has questions for you? Do any council, we will now take, be taking public testimony from, first from the, in favor of the applications, followed by-
I think the applicant actually-
Oh, I missed it, I'm sorry. Skip down. We will now take testimony from the applicant. Would the applicant please state your name? Don't put your address out there unless it's a business address, and make any comments you may have for the council. I, I don't want personal addresses out to public. Come on in, please.
I have a presentation, PowerPoint, connected by Zoom. Do I have the ability to share my screen?
He's coming over here.
Good evening, my name is Lindsay McLean Godwin. I'm a planner with MSS Engineering. The address of the business is 215 Northwest 4th Street in Corvallis, 97330. And my colleague here will introduce himself.
My name is Peter Cedars. Lindsay and I work together at MSS, and I'm here just to answer any questions that may come up.
Great. All right, thank you for your time tonight, and thank you, David, for the presentation. I will be going into a little more detail about the criteria. So there's the five main criteria, talking about, the first one is comprehensive plan compatibility, and the next about adequate transportation facilities, and then the third is about the other types of services such as utilities, police, fire, and schools. The fourth confirms, or is where we propose that we are satisfying the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. And the fifth is showing that we are following the land use and transportation plans. So for number one, as David mentioned, the comprehensive plan designation is the residential medium density, and both the RM and RMA zones fall within this category, so we're sticking to the comprehensive plan designation. And while it's not directly part of compatibility, I have this map here showing the current dispersal of the RMA zone, it's the orange stars here. You can see they're fairly random, I mean, I don't know about random, but they're sort of island-like. They don't seem to be in big blobs together. And so, so I show that to, to, to indicate that our proposal is not unlike the existing pattern. Because it seems to go even right next to low, low-density residential in addition to higher commercial, and just, you know, a wide variety of zones. So here I have some images cut out from the Albany Transportation Systems Plan, specifically related to intersections and mainly intersections here. And so on Marion Street, there are bike lanes, and there's also a bus stop. And Marion Street is considered a major collector road, which is, which is the category of road that is supportive of higher-density developments. And this is specifically called out in the comprehensive plan. And so on this slide here, you can see that the Marion Street and Queen's Avenue intersection has quite a good level of service, category, level of service, which is B, where the operational standard is D or better. And in addition, the volume capacity ratio is .61, and the, and up to .85 is considered an acceptable operation. So, so the addition of a bit of transportation is going to be well within the ability of So, so the addition of a bit of transportation is going to be well within the ability of the intersection as it currently is. And I have, all the calculations are provided in the transportation report, which is in your packet. I'll summarize just a little bit of that. And so since the zone is RM, it can allow apartments, multifamily housing, you know, some higher density. And so the difference between the two, if, if we're assuming an apartment complex of some kind, would be approximately 20 additional PM trips. And then if we look at the daily trips, that would be approximately about 256 trips. Both of these are considered insignificant. For the ODOT standard, that's 400 daily trips to require traffic impact analysis. So this is almost half of that. So we, we don't have a transportation impact analysis for that reason. So we've concluded that there are adequate transportation facilities. Additionally, there appear to be sufficient other infrastructure facilities such as water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer. There are existing infrastructures located within Marion Street. And there are also some pipes along the western property line of the northern piece of the property. And no concerns have been expressed from public works regarding connection to these facilities. They are adequately sized. And additionally, we've heard no concerns from police, fire, or the school district. And I think I showed in another slide, but there are multiple schools within a half-mile of this property. So we propose that this site is suitable for this level of development. So here, this is the map. All the red stars are where the schools are located. So you can see there's quite a few. But this, this criteria is specific to satisfying the goals of the comprehensive plan. And we find that our proposal meets several of those goals, including the goal two, 10, 12, and 14. So those are land use planning, housing, transportation, and urbanization. The application narrative goes into a bit of detail here, so obviously won't go into that level of detail. But it talks a lot about housing variety, also in, in housing types, but also in density, lot sizes, and design to support, you know, all the different housing needs that people are looking for. And this property would be considered infill development because it's surrounded on almost all sides by development and has the infrastructure there to support it. As mentioned, Marion Street is a major collector, which is, which is meant for higher development support. And a higher density development in this location can provide a buffer between those lower-density homes to the east from the industrial development to the west. So for criteria five, in looking at the transportation system plan and the, and the land use plans, we find that we are consistent with the transportation system plan. We're not proposing any changes. And this development, any future development will provide for the extension of Lyon Street to the north, continuing its intended connection to a few properties farther north to where it exists right now. And so in conclusion, we find that the proposal satisfies the zone change criteria. It will provide additional needed units in the RMA zone. There's not currently a whole lot of RMA zone. And we concur with the staff report and David's recommendation for approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do any council members have questions for the applicant? Counselor Olson?
RM, RMA zone is the, well, attached apartment houses?
Yes, it allows for attached housing.
And how many more units are there beyond just the RM zone?
You mean the increased level of density compared to the RM?
Yes.
The RM zone allows for 25 units per acre, and the RMA allows for 35 units per acre. It's actually impossible to get that level of density because of the size requirements for each unit type and the roads and all the infrastructure and stormwater. But it does certainly increase the density.
Seems to me it's a little high for this part of town.
Any other councils have anything? Okay. We will now be taking public testimony from those in favor of the application, followed by those in opposition to the, with concerns, and finally from anyone who is neutral. If anyone wishes to enter into exhibit, into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then email it to the address provided, CDAA-cityofalbany.net. Those who registered to speak, meaning, during this meeting will now be called upon to present verbal testimony. No one other than the applicant signed into the sign-in sheet, so I'll move on to the next item. We will now be taking public testimony from those who did not register to speak beforehand. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand or be, if you are attending in person or if you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. If you are attending on the phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. Hands are up. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition or express concerns about the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak neutrally about the application? Does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony? There will be none, I imagine. If you do, not a good thing. Does any, does anyone have procedural questions that would like to raise at this time? If so, please raise your hand if you're attending in person. If you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. I declare the public hearing closed at 8:31 PM. Does the city council wish to discuss this case? Okay. There is an ordinance for your consideration in the council packet. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance in title only?
An ordinance amending ordinance 4836, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan, and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning and adopting findings for the property located at Lynn County Assessor map number 11S-03W-18BA tax lot 601 and 700.
Thank you, city attorney. Would the council like to make a motion or to read the ordinance a second time in title only?
Move to read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second.
Okay, motion on the second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Olson?
Reluctantly, yes.
Counselor Novak?
I realized I missed an opportunity to ask a question. Do I have, could I have an opportunity, or have I just completely missed it?
You can, if you, yeah, if you have a question, is it of, of the staff or of who?
I, I, I don't know if it's the staff or the applicant, or possibly both. I just, I sort of agree with Counselor Olson that 25, 35 units in that area is kind of a lot of build-out. And I was just wondering if there's any way, I don't, I don't guess the applicant would want to open themselves up to doing triplexes and quads instead of 35, because they're in it to make money.
Right.
So, yeah, yeah.
Only caution is if we, if we bring the applicant back up, we need to open the hearing. We've already closed the public hearing.
All right. Yeah, like I said, I thought I missed my opportunity, so I did. My, my apologies.
No problem. Go ahead and continue the roll call, please.
Yes, Counselor Novak?
All right. I guess I'll add a reluctantly yes, because I would have liked to ask, but I messed up, so.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Yes.
Counselor Kopczynski?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
That's six to zero.
Great. So read if the council makes a decision, the decision, those opposed say no.
Mayor? I think that was, that was a motion for the second, to read it in title only.
Will the city attorney read the motion in title only?
Yes. An ordinance amending, ordinance number 4836, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan map and amending order number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map, amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings for the property located at Lynn County Assessor's map number S-0W-18BA tax lots 01 and 700.
Move for the adopter of your ordinance?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion, no? Thank you. Motion passes five to one.
I did not pick up the no vote.
Okay.
Who, Counselor Olson?
So, go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Okay. All right, Counselor Olson?
I'm voting no. I think this is overloading the street. I think it's overloading the neighborhood.
Counselor Novak?
Ultra-high, well, it's not ultra-high. It could be higher, but not much. I'm voting no.
Counselor Novak?
I am giving a reluctant yes.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Yes.
Counselor Kopczynski?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
The decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after decision becomes final. Within five working days following the adoption of the amendment or new land use regulation, the director shall forward the department to the Department of Land Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted amendments and findings and notify the department if any substantial changes which may be occurred in the proposal since the previous notification to the department. Thank you. Next on the agenda is business from the public. Directions to testify and submit written materials were published on the council agenda. No one submitted written materials in the tonight's meeting, and has anyone signed up to speak? So we have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Stephen Draper. Sir, you have three minutes, please.
My name's Stephen Draper. I've been living in Albany for almost 66 years.
Microphone.
My dad was Dick Draper. What I'm here for is to get the inspections for 337 and 338. 337 was raised. I have an affidavit from the inspectors whose name was on there.
Sir, first speak into the microphone. Pull it close.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I have a affidavit from Randy Pepper, who was the inspector. It was a fraudulent document. He did not do the inspection. In fact, he had never been inside of 337. He was at his father's funeral. When he came back, he was forced to sign the document under threat of losing his job. Also, there's a couple of things that were done during the inspection. She sandbagged it. It was Ms. Adams who had done it. And I would just like to get that inspection because I'm going to try to use that as an ethics violation by American Opah and her administration at the time. My dad lost his life because of this. And they lost everything. I lost all my money. I served my country. I sent money home to my parents to help keep their head above water. The worst thing that happened, she may have lost part of my lung because of asbestos. But the worst thing that happened was a night that I walked into my dad's bathroom, and I could hear him talking. Except he wasn't talking, he was praying and weeping, asking God to help him. Because I know there are people here that know what exactly happened. But not one city council member, even though we asked twice, to walk five blocks, to walk through the house, to inspect it, seeing is believing, nobody would do it. And we were told, in an about way, that they were told not to do it. So I would just like to get that inspection for 337 so I can, well, let's just say get some truths and some history correct. There's no money involved with this. We don't want any money. We don't want anybody go to jail. I just want the truth. My dad's Dick Draper. He's been in, my parents have been in this city almost 100 years. And his name was really trashed out. And I think some of you know who he was. He's a good guy. He was a Christian. He used that house to witness to people. He let people get in there for a lot of times, no money down. But the city, certain people hated the people my dad would rent you. My dad would invite them to church. I don't know what else to say. I'm just really hurt. Like I said, June 20th, I've been in this town 66 years. I can take you around here and give you a history report. So I would just like for the city council to allow me somehow to get access to that. I'm not tech savvy. I just, I just need that inspection.
Thank you, sir. Could you please do me a favor? Make sure that the city clerk has the actual address?
Yes.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So next on the agenda is first reading of ordinances. Albany Municipal Code Amendments, Christian Dell, page 112 and 120 in your packet. Is he here tonight? He's not?
Yep.
There he is.
Oh, he's online. Okay, someone finishes up. Item one is AMC-21-11 slash A, subparagraph A, central area parking area expansion. And number two, AMC 13-70 abandoned vehicles. We talked about this Monday night. Officer Shindell? You're muted.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add from our conversation on Monday.
Can't hear you.
We cannot hear you. It sounds like you're talking in a tin can.
Or worse.
Or worse. Would you, can you hang up, mute yourself and call in?
He's not in his office.
And I think he's going to say, Mr. Mayor, that we had the discussion on Monday and that he's here to answer questions if you have any, any further questions, which the city attorney might also try to answer for him. We'll wait for him to call in.
Please talk into the mic.
Gotcha.
Are you there? We needed that, Dick. Thank you. So counsel, you heard Officer Shindell Monday? Are you guys okay with going forward?
Sir? Forgive me. I, I had a constituent come to me about this, and so I do have a question.
Okay, so as soon as he gets on.
Yes, thank you.
Could you think the city attorney can answer it?
Maybe, possibly. I'm willing to give it a shot.
Fire away.
Thank you. All right. So a gentleman, a constituent, came to me in regard to this, and I, I thought he raised a good point. He said that sometimes if you're looking at separating a homeless individual from their last remaining possession, you know, from, and so I don't want to, I mean, I know from what Emma testified, the director of Helping Hands, that crime has gone up markedly and, and, you know, this and, and, you know, the situation that I heard from Tina Vanderburg as well. We know that when people are living on the street, living in abandoned vehicles, or not abandoned, but, you know, living out of their car, my position is no one should live in their vehicle in the municipality of Albany, Oregon, that should not be permitted. But I also realize that I, I don't want, if someone, if all they have left is their car, I want to somehow assure that that's not being taken away from them. I don't, I don't want them living in their car anywhere in Albany, but what, what sort of, is there any kind of accommodation, so we're not taking away their last?
So, my, and I'll let Chris confirm this, but we're not taking the vehicle away, we're just not allowing them to park in that spot. Now, I guess if they said we're not to leave and there's nothing you can do about it, then maybe their car would be towed at that point. But we're not confiscating their vehicle if they're there, we're just saying, hey, you can't park here, because, look, the stuff that we heard tonight, we're, we're trying to remove access to illegal substances for the people who are sheltered in those facilities, right? That it's kind of a, an attractive nuisance, speak, uh, for, for them. But yeah, we're not, we're not taking their vehicle.
I appreciate that clarification, because that, to me, was a really, that was a concern, so that, that helps me feel a whole lot better, thank you.
Thank you very much, counselor. Any other counselors have anything? Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinances for the second, oh, excuse me, would the city council please read the ordinance in title only?
Certainly, an ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code AMC, chapter thirteen point two one point one one two, Central Albany Parking Area.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time in title only?
So move.
Seconded.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no?
I'm gonna say no on this one, I, I think it needs a little more, uh, public discussion.
Then we'll be bringing it back to the next meeting. All right, thank you very much, Counselor Olson and counsel for voting.
Well, we, we oughta, we oughta read it the first time, at least tonight.
So the next one is AMC thirteen seventy abandoned vehicles, does the staff have a report? Uh, would the city attorney please read the ordinance in title only?
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC, chapter thirteen point seven zero abandoned vehicles.
Would the council like to make a motion for a second reading of the ordinance in title only?
I move that the ordinance be read a second time in title only.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no? Motion passes.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC, chapter thirteen point seven zero abandoned vehicles.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes. Next on the agenda is award of a contract, of contracts. It is, um, award of contract for MS dash two two dash zero one dash CC Albany Transit Operations Facility, Stacy, the very patient Stacy Bo Castro, and Nolan Nelson, page one twenty-one, one twenty-three, your packet.
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. Nolan is at home, I don't know if he's watching still, but, um, he's available, I guess, if, if there are any technical questions. Um, before you is a recommendation from staff to award a contract to David Evans and Associates. David Evans and Associates is a consultant, their main office is located in Portland, but I did wanna point out that, that the staff that we work with from their firm, they're from the Willamette Valley, um, and even some people reside here in Albany. We received two proposals from consultants in response to a request for a proposal that was publicly advertised for the Transit Operation Facility. Both consultants were qualified, but David Evans and Associates, um, their proposal was much more detailed and it demonstrated that they had a very thorough knowledge of what was needed to complete the design for this facility. The Transit Operation Facility, it's going to include construction of storage for the city's fleet of buses and then also maintenance areas and, um, uh, I think an office for, for one of the supervisors and, and the staff also to take breaks. The, the project, it is in the current capital improvement program, um, but construction of this facility has been identified as a need for many, many years. In fact, it was, I think, five or six years ago that council approved purchase of the property that this facility will be sited on. Currently, the city's buses, um, they're stored behind Fire Station Twelve. The location where they're at, they don't have water, they don't have sewer. Additionally, um, the fire department would like us to move because they need this space in order to expand their training facilities at the site. The estimated cost of this project, project through construction, including design, is eight point one million dollars. It's, it's a lot, but, um, one of the good things about this type of project is it is eligible for grant funding. One thing I noticed when I looked at the memo is it didn't specify, um, the split. This project, um, for the design contract, we have secured grants in the amount of approximately six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so for the majority of the contract, the city's match would be approximately a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from Street Cap- Capital Fund. Are there any questions?
Just a comment, this is long overdue and needs to be done, thank you.
Any other counsel?
One comment from me, in plain English, the Transit Operations Facility is the Bus Barn, is that right?
Yes.
But it's more than a barn, finally.
Yeah.
It will be.
Yes, and it, it helps with the grant applications if it has a fancy, fancy name.
Okay.
Well, that's good. Counsel, with any other questions?
Stacy, what was the, the city match, I missed that amount?
Oh, the city match, it's gonna come out of Street Capital Reserves and it's approximately a hundred and forty-five thousand.
Okay, all right, thank you, yeah, I think Chief Wooten's gonna be very happy, thank you.
So would a counsel like to make a motion?
My move that we approve the, uh, proposal and bid from Dave, Dave Evans, uh, company.
Second.
Uh, Bus Barn.
Have a motion and a second by Counselor Johnson, thank you very much. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those, those opposed say no? Motion passes. Award of, next on the agenda, award of contracts, ST twenty-two zero, zero seven, Periwinkle Plan Path Extension, Stacy Best, Bo Castro and Aaron Heimstra?
Yep.
Did I say that properly?
Yeah.
Thank you, I don't wanna butcher your name. Pages one twenty-four to one twenty-seven in your packet.
Good evening, thank you, uh, Mayor and counsel, and I was close enough on my name. It's not an easy one, I know that. So on, um, May third, uh, four bids were submitted for ST twenty-two oh seven, uh, Periwinkle Path Extension. The bids ranged from three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, uh, eight hundred and forty-five to three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and ten. The little bidder was PAC X, uh, Excavation out of Eugene, Oregon, um, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight forty-five. Uh, the engineer's estimate for this project was two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, the project includes the extension of Periwinkle Path from the existing path, um, at Periwinkle Creek and extends it east to, uh, the Queen and Geary intersection. Uh, the project also includes two pedestrian crossing assemblies at Main Street and Thurston Street. Staff recommends, uh, council award the project, um, to Pacific Excavation in the amount of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars.
Any, any questions for Mr. Heimstra?
Yes.
Counselor Kopczynski?
Just in general, considering some of the contract issues that have cropped up in the last few months due to costs rising, what, uh, type of guarantees do we have that they will be able to meet these, uh, their bid, uh, proposals?
I'm hoping that with the actual bids and the, the line items that they kind of stick with, the bid numbers that they gave us, hopefully it was detailed enough that they wouldn't come back with change orders or anything that would, uh, change the prices.
There's not, there isn't such a thing as a performance bond or something like that?
I think typically with all capital project, there's a performance bond.
Okay, thank you.
And there's a contingency of this, right? Okay, thank you. So counsel, any other questions? Oh, Counselor Smith.
Comment, um, I wanted to point out that this is a Safe Routes to School Grant Project, primarily, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars of the project is from that grant, um, and I just wanna express my enthusiastic support for the traffic, uh, safety improvements with the, the lights and the extension of the path, having been hit by a car on this section of Queen some years ago, on my bike, um, and lived to tell the tale, um, I'm thrilled that this is being done, so, thank you. That's another story for another time.
Talked about that one. Uh, Counselor Olson?
Uh, yeah, you don't show much in the way of detail about how you're going to, uh, make it so it's easy to get across Queen Avenue there. Do you go up to the light and go across, or blinky lights, or tunnel, or what do you do?
So for the grant, uh, we propose doing the two, um, pedestrian assemblies, which is the, the rapid response flashing beacons that has the flashing lights. There's Main Street, they'd have one set of those, so there'd be a button on each side of the street, Thurston would have another set of those as well. So we're also redoing the ADA ramps there as well to improve the crossing.
So you got those blinky lights just a few feet from the, uh, traffic light on Gary Street.
So you're putting curve, curve outs for the ADA compliance?
Yeah, there's existing, uh, ones there, and they'll be redone to be compliant with current ADA standards.
Okay.
I'm sure it'll be fine.
Um, would the council like to make a motion?
Move to award the contract to Pacific Excavation.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, all those, uh, those opposed say no? Motion passes. Next on the agenda, item is adoption of the consent calendar. Would a counsel like to make a motion?
Move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes. Next on the agenda is business from the council. I would start with Counselor Johnson.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Counselor Novak?
Oh, really? Jumping to this end, okay. All right, um, I'm gonna just keep it to one thing this evening. Um, another constituent came to me today, and I, I'm guessing Officer Shindell is probably off for the night, but if we could get information to him to check out in Bryant Park, um, this constituent was walking with a grandchild and noticed a makeshift fire pit under the train trellis. They were looking at the water under the, and they, it looked like someone had made a fire pit and it had recently been used, and she's thinking, it might be wise to clear that out, and also, uh, she noted that the picnic benches closest to the river need to be hosed off, they're, I guess it looked like they'd been covered in mud from high water and all the rains we've had, so, um, if Officer Shindell or whoever on staff would take a look at that, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bartholomew.
I have a couple things. I really appreciate the, uh, Fire Department, so, uh, constituent, uh, came to me and expressed concern, which I also had had, um, during the, um, the boot, uh, what do you call that? With the Fire Department?
Fill the boot.
Fill the boot. Um, yes, so, uh, the fill the boot, uh, activity, um, is firefighters on the side of the road, holding up their boots, cars stopping, donating items, or donating money. Um, and we have, the, the constituent expressed concern that, that we have an ordinance that doesn't allow for an exchange between a car and a person on the side of the street. And my own experience, um, was I was traveling and a person stopped suddenly in their vehicle while I was traveling behind them, and, to put some money in a boot, and, uh, I almost ran into them. And so, I was also sharing a little concern of the danger, dangerous activity, I didn't, I thought it was good when they were in the Fred Meyer parking lot and people could pull out and into that, but it was a little scary to see firefighters dancing in the street. And so, with the cars, cars. Although I know they are, uh, people who have a high degree of, uh, risk-taking. So I wanted to bring that to the attention of the city, and, um, also I wanted to express a, a gratitude that, for our proclamation, that we passed our proclamation, um, for LGBTQ Pride Month for the month of June, um, as a member of the LGBTQ community, I appreciate that, and I appreciate Albany having, um, supporting that for the many years, and particularly the mayor showing up to activities, um, I really appreciate that, and, um, I wish that all communities, um, would be as similarly supportive, and I will be visiting them. So thank you.
Counselor Kopczynski?
Yes, everybody mark your calendars for Saturday, June fourth, at eleven AM. It will be the public unveiling of a brand-new animal down at the carousel called Foxy. Uh, the unveilings are always a big whoop-de-doo, simply because the sponsor of the animal gets to come in early with as many family members as they wish, and they get to watch the animal actually being unveiled, uh, I mean, mounted onto the carousel platform, have pictures taken, and then when we open it up to the public, we have a great big huge sheet cake with, uh, the public gets to partake, they have, uh, T-shirts, postcards of the new animal, et cetera, et cetera, so, um, it's always a lot of fun all day long on an unveiling day, so, Saturday, June fourth, thank you.
Counselor Olson?
Uh, yes, um, I was disappointed, uh, to hear, um, Brad Wilson say that his wife, when she is attending an event at the, what used to be our Senior Citizen Center, that they have to get people in there and unlock the door, uh, because of the interference of, uh, oh, uh, people that misbehave, uh, down there in, um, Montez Park. And I'm wondering if it's because there is now less usage of that building now that it's no longer Senior Citizen Center? And, um, it, it's, uh, been my observation that, uh, buildings and right-of-ways and so forth that don't get much use, tend to get abused, and, um, so I, I don't see parks people here anymore, and I don't see law people here anymore.
No, but Counselor Olson, I can tell you that there's actually more usage of the building than there was before.
Is there now?
There is now more use. And I should also tell you that on June sixteenth, our park rangers gonna start. So, um, there, there may be some real concrete steps taken to solve that problem.
Well, that's good to hear, okay. Yeah, it reminds me of when I was on the council back in the, maybe the bad old days, in, in those days, um, it was Bryant Park, not Montez Park, and, uh, there were so many misbehavers down there, that the police chief was afraid to go down there and do anything about it, so. At times, uh, what goes around comes around, I guess, and I hope we can do something about it.
Thank you.
I have a, an, well, we haven't talked about this for a long time, but, uh, I, the, recent, uh, school shooting in Texas made me think of, well, the incidence of violence in public places in general has me concerned, um, and I realized that, I'm looking around the room tonight when we had- And I realized that, I'm looking around the room tonight, when we had a fairly decent-sized crowd for our renewed meetings in City Hall, that we didn't have a police presence. And according to the municipal code, the chief of police or a designee from the police department shall be the sergeant-at-arms at council meetings. And that used to be common practice, but since we haven't had meetings in council chambers for a long time, that's, that hasn't been happening. So I don't know if it's necessary. Maybe I'm just being paranoid, but I, the world doesn't feel safe to me every day. And so it, it'd be nice if we could ask the police department if they have somebody to spare.
I'll take that for action.
Okay, thank you. No, thanks.
So I was asked that same question by a family member because of what you see on the media and what's going on in the world. My safety is important, your safety is important. I don't want any one of us being hurt or anyone out there being hurt as well. So please, thank you, Peter, for taking that on. I'm happy about the park ranger. I was, it was on the top of my list to ask about. I'm on, I'm on social media like most of us. People are sending me information about people camping on streets, trash being piling up. And I've single-handedly ruined, ruined the city since I got elected, so I'm trying to fix that. But people are, people are concerned about the camping and pathways and things like that. So we need to figure out, you know, how to get that taken care of or at least addressed. I was a keynote speaker over in Pendleton at the Black Rural Network Conference, basically talking about the city of Albany. I handed out 100 visitors' guides to Albany. I gave a bunch of grandparents tokens, they'll be coming here to visit this summer, invite them to our concerts. Was on Native, Native American Reservation. Was really a wonderful presentation. I was a keynote speaker, and I talked about Albany, the things going on in Albany, the, the developments, the, the atmosphere, the food. I talked about First Avenue, the historic homes. I talked about the people here, and OPB called me for an interview, and we talked today. So I told Kyle about it, but I've met with OPB today, had a great conversation with them about the city of Albany. And then bird scooters have been showing up everywhere. So network on the next, next door, a lady said, somebody lose a scooter. And she didn't say where she was, but they're popping up in different places in the city. And some kids apparently were skid marks, you know, sliding around by the carousel. So they're being used. I just hope people are being safe. And then on the 31st, in Lynn County, I'll be introducing or welcoming folks to the Lynn County Memorial for Memorial Day. They'd ask me to come out and speak there. And then today is the two-year anniversary of the George Floyd murder. You know, it's been, it's been two years already, and we still see craziness happening in our world, and we have, our leaders have to do something. So just want to let you know that. And city manager, I will turn the schedule over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Counselor Bartholomew, thank you for the, the point about the MDA. Muscular dystrophy association is what Fill the Boot supports, and supposedly they get the permits for firefighters to be on the streets and to be conducting those operations. But I'll, I'll look further into that as well. Just a reminder that tomorrow evening at 5:30 at the library is the dedication of the Sharon Canopa Garden Room. And then to let you know also that we have agreed to, at, at the last minute, host the Chamber of Commerce greeters here next Thursday, June 2nd. Their, their original site had fallen through. So Chamber of Commerce will be here at 8 o'clock in the morning for 45 minutes or so. We'll have a chance to tell a little bit about what, what we do at the city. And it's mostly a, a social event for those of you that have been to the greeters before. And then the last thing I'll say is that this weekend is Memorial Day, and I wish you all a restful weekend. I don't think it's appropriate to say Happy Memorial Day because of the reason for the, for the holiday. But nevertheless, I hope that you get to spend time with family and friends and, and have a good weekend.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I would, I would add one thing about Memorial Day. I wrote a speech several years ago about a Colonel named Louis Forché. And, and I was at home after boot camp, and this gentleman, I went to VFW, they encourage you to, after boot camp, to go visit with veterans. And I walked into this VFW, and this gentleman just grabbed me. He's calling me Buck. And Colonel Louis Forché was a lieutenant colonel when he was in overseas, and he got shot. It was mort, not mortally wounded, but he was really wounded, and he was almost dying. And his first sergeant carried him back to the mass unit. His name was Buck. Well, he never got a chance to thank Buck, because Buck went back the next day and got killed. And so when he saw me, he thought I was Buck. He died before I came up to Oregon, because I was in the Navy almost 11 years. But the thing was, is that the last time I saw him, he called me Alexander. But, and so from that, I wrote a speech called Every Day is Memorial Day for someone. And so for 94 years, this man thought about Buck, and he was, and he was amazing to me. And so Memorial Day, you have veterans in your family that you've lost, anyone that you've lost, say a prayer for them. And, and send one up, bend the knee, send one up, and have a restful and peaceful Memorial Day. Next meeting is June 6th. Is our work session at 4:00 p.m. And June 8th is our city council meeting, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.